I'm going to call this meeting to order if you'll please rise. Today, we have Reverend Griff Vaudier from the Kingman Presbyterian Church and he's also the Coordinator of the Kingman Ministerial Association. He's here to give our invocation.
Thank you. Sovereign Lord God of the universe, we come before you today to ask that your wisdom, understanding, and blessing be given to our Mojave County Board of Supervisors. The citizens of this region have entrusted and empowered these men and women to govern and guide our county. The scriptures tell us in Proverbs 2 verse 6, "The Lord gives wisdom to those who seek it, and that from God's mouth comes both knowledge and understanding." As our county supervisors deliberate the items on today's agenda, including the possible selection of a new sheriff for Mojave County, grant, O God, that your guidance and insight will be theirs. We ask these things for the benefit of our people and in your name, O Lord. Amen and amen.
And Supervisor Bishop, in the pledge, please?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on July 7th, 2014. No, that's not July 7th, that would be July, what is that, 21st, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Are there any committee and or legislative reports?
Madam Chair, I attended the Arizona Association of Counties Leadership Conference Marketplace this past month along with Supervisor Angus, Recorder Myers, Assessor Nicholson, and Sheriff Sheehan. The conference brought together county officials from all 15 counties and focused on leadership. We also received an update on current federal legislation from Paul Beto with the National Association of Counties. There were affiliate meetings to address specific issues affecting the county assessors, court clerks, constables, and county recorders. I left out Berlin Tenell, our clerk of the court was also there. During the meeting, ACO also partnered with Coppertalk and the Arizona Clean Elections Commission to host a gubernatorial candidate forum. The forum was a chance for county officials to meet the candidates and make them aware of the important issues affecting Arizona counties. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, anyone else? Anything else? Number four, do we have a county administrator's report?
Nothing today, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Okay, and five, we have no minutes to approve today. Soft to call to public, those wishing to address the board at the call to the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on the future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda with the exception of the consent agenda and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. We have a couple of people signed up. First, Mr. Lee McWilliam. I apologize, not a mister.
Spelling is the bad part of it. Thank you. I'm here today to represent our Dolan's Watch, it's a new Dolan Springs Neighborhood Watch that we formed. And I'm representing the residents that are formed that we're trying to live in Dolan Springs as it's our right to do, and we want to be able to live there safely and peacefully, and thus far we aren't being able to do that. We, the citizens, land, and homeowners, and taxpayers of Dolan Springs, have been dealing with an epidemic of burglaries of mass proportion for the last year. Items taken include vehicles, prescription drugs, money, and guns, and any quick sale item. We can say that our Mojave County Sheriff's Department has been doing a fine job of serving our community and protecting us. This is not the problem. The problem lies within the system, starting with our Mojave County District Attorney's Office failing to charge these culprits with enough to make a difference, but also making deals with public and private attorneys for lesser sentences. The probation department then slaps them on the hand and sends them on their way where they come back and do the crimes all over again, hardly if ever following up on them, and we know this for a fact. They often are already on probation. It has been noted that in some instances, the criminals may get back to Dolan Springs before the arresting officer can get back. We have teens and young adults, sometimes embedded by family, doing these crimes. We know who they are, the deputies know who they are, and so it goes, this vicious cycle of torment on both sides of the circle. We of Dolan Springs are tired of our homes being burglarized and losing cherished possessions that we have worked hard for, and in some cases, there are things handed down from the families that have been taken. We feel like hostages on our own land and home. We demand that you, the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, our elected officials, stand up for us and make this right. Our Area 4 Supervisor is only one member of your board. It will take the whole board to correct this problem. This is a serious legal problem, and our, we homes are in danger there. We ask that you start helping us, and we ask you to start now, today. If you would like to contact and talk further with our group, I can give you a phone number. It's 928-530-6126. 928-530-6126. We would be glad to talk with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. For the record, could you please state your name and address, which I don't think we did?
My name is Lee MacWilliam, and I'm at Orchid Street in Dolan Springs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, we have Chief Tom O'Donoghue from the Golden Valley Fire Department.
Madam Chair, board members. Last year, the board approved the annexation of roadways into the Golden Valley Fire District, and we did that for many reasons. One of the reasons was, that was cited right here at the board meeting, was in case county members needed emergency services outside of our jurisdictional boundaries. Last week, you all saw how that played out very well, so I wanted to applaud the wisdom of the board in approving that annexation. We were able to respond in force because when a county member inadvertently drove off the edge of a roadway and down about 150-foot cliff, we were able to activate our technical rescue team and assist the county technical rescue team, search and rescue, with the extrication of your county road supervisor from over the cliff. So I just wanted to tell you that your wisdom helped make this a successful rescue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And how is that employee doing?
Supervisor Watson and I went and saw him the day of the accident, and he was going to be held overnight. He had some contusions, but he was extremely fortunate and very lucky.
Yes, well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Have a question. Oh, I was just wondering, was the Oatman Fire Department able to respond and assist on that as well?
There was one, they were very shorthanded. As you know, Oatman Fire is an all-volunteer organization. They responded with one person, and so they were not able to engage in the rescue at all. So Mojave Valley Fire District responded as the ambulance that routinely responds up to that area, and we were called in along with search and rescue in Mojave County Sheriff's Office. And so I think there was about 20 rescuers up there, and we moved nice and deliberately slow and safely because the patient was conscious and alert for us, and so we were able to move slowly and deliberately without hurting any of our rescuers as well. Had he been in a life-or-death situation, we would have engaged much more quickly, but as you probably saw in the pictures, the cab was smashed completely flat. There was about six to eight inches of space between the cab and the top of the door. The cab actually rested on the headrest of the driver's seat. So he was very fortunate, and the rescue went off without a hitch. We were up there for several hours to do it nice and safely, and ultimately, the DPS helicopter plucked him off the side of the hillside there, the crash site, and overdoing a waiting ambulance. But everybody performed really well together, and so, you know, I want to applaud them as well. But your decision here allowed us to engage and do that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak for a call to public who didn't sign up?
You did sign up.
Oh, you did sign up? Are you, are you Ms. Allen? Okay, when we-
I'm sorry.
When we get to that agenda item, are you Darlene?
Yes.
Okay, when we get to that agenda item, we will ask you to come up and speak then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll close the call to public. Next up, we have a presentation from Craig Sullivan. Craig is the Executive Director of the County Supervisors Association. Just to give you a little background, for more than 30 years, the CSA has served as a nonpartisan forum for county officials to address important issues facing local constituents, providing a mechanism to share information and to develop a proactive state and federal policy agenda. CSA membership includes the 61 elected supervisors from Arizona's 15 counties. The association's efforts are strengthened by the involvement of top-level county professional staff who provide technical expertise necessary to inform policy discussions. Mr. Sullivan?
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the board, for having us here today. It's a real pleasure to stand before you, to report out on some of the activities of the County Supervisors Association, particularly as it relates to the past legislative session. And I wanted to mention as well that I have with me Kristin Sapola, a legislative liaison with our team, and we're both very excited to have this opportunity with you. The PowerPoint that we have before you breaks down some of the reporting that we provided to our client base, bill by bill, objective by objective, that we pursued over this last legislative session. So I'll go through some of that. But very importantly, we'd like to hear from you about things that are important to you, perspectives you have about issues that we were working on, and that really helps us serve this county in an efficient way going forward. So to begin with, and Madam Chair, you described the organization very well for us. We are a coalition of all 15 counties. We're a research and advocacy organization based down in Phoenix. We're an intergovernmental office of the counties, working with the state legislature, with the governor's office, and state agencies. The way we're organized, all of you serve on our Board of Directors, 61 county supervisors are on our Board of Directors. We have six of your colleagues who are nominated to serve in our leadership chain, but we tap one person per county to serve on what we call our Legislative Policy Committee. You all know that the efficacy of an association like ours depends directly on the involvement of its membership base. And I have to thank you, Madam Chairman, and this whole board, for your engagement in our association, taking the time to make sure that Mojave County has a presence down at the State Capitol. It's a huge deal, and we appreciate it. Mr. Watson, you served on our Legislative Policy Committee this year. Thank you very much for that. Mr. Moss is serving as the Medium County Caucus Chair, and Mr. Johnson is serving as the President of our Partner Association, ACO. So it really shows how Mojave County is making sure that you're at the table and your voice is being heard. It makes us very proud, and it makes us do our job that much better when you're engaged. So thank you for that. And I also want to thank Mr. Hendricks for his good work, and your professional staff, Mr. Ligenfelter, who helped you this past legislative session. The communication from this county was very spot-on for us to make sure Mojave County's interests were at the table. So thanks for taking on that extra time. In terms of county services, we did provide a couple of documents for you that I just wanted to point to, but I'm not going to waste too much time with. Every year, we provide a legislative summary, which reviews and summarizes all the bills that go through the legislature. It's listed for you by policy area. It's a key product that is used by program officials in the counties to implement state law. Came out about three weeks ago, just wanted to make sure that you're aware of it. It's on the streets and available for your review. I also provided to you a year-end report, which is a breakdown of the services we provide. Again, as members of our board, take a moment at your leisure to review the activities that we're engaged in. What we'll focus on today is really all about the legislature. When we go into the state legislature, we convene all of the county supervisors to come up with a strategic plan, specific objectives to deal with at the State Capitol. And this year, again, we were focused on the budget priorities of all 15 counties, dealing with HERF diversion problems, addressing cost shifts to the Arizona State Hospital, trying to maintain and restore, and have a commitment to lottery revenues for the counties. Those are the big budget items. We also focus, though, on our proactive legislative agenda, which are bills that are brought to us by our client counties, and there were some of those. And then a lot of what we do is about reactive advocacy. Every year, hundreds of bills come into the process that impact county operations. Our job is to review them and engage them in your interest as directed by you. So how do we go about it? Well, since the budget information is so important to all of the counties, we spend a lot of time quarterbacking a messaging campaign among all of you and your colleagues. Thank you for your involvement in that. It really helps us get the message out. It turns the individual voices of each county into really what is a megaphone, and your lawmakers hear it. And so know that your involvement in that makes sure that your legislative delegation and others know what the priorities are of you and all of the counties. We do that every year, and it's become a fairly effective tool for us. This year, we focused a little bit more on getting the message out around transportation. Now, why did we do that? Well, transportation systems generally have been underfunded for many years, but during the downturn, the state legislature swept what amounts now in aggregate to about $6 million of Mojave County resources from road building and maintenance. You know more than I what that all means to your community. Our job was to get the message out about the problems associated with that and start incrementally getting those resources back. And that's where having a former engineer as a manager really helped out, because he was able to make sure that Mojave County's anecdotes and data was in our package, and it went a long way at the State Capitol this year. So that was the messaging side of it, but what were the results? And they're listed for you here. The HERF situation was a big deal, and there was some restoration of local government HERF. It will bring about $500,000 back to Mojave County. That's about half of what we sought as a coalition to return to Mojave County. Secondly, the lottery revenues were established as a line item appropriation, which will bring $550,000 to your county. And thirdly, the SVP cost shift to the Arizona State Hospital was maintained in state law. So the return on investment totaled about $1 million, half of that in HERF money, half of that in general fund money. So the question I get asked a lot was, why didn't the legislature restore more of the county resources that they've taken? And I think the answer is simply that the legislature still views itself in structural deficit for several years, and they're going to be incredibly judicious on how they restore dollars, even those that are rightfully yours. And so what we end up with is competing with all interests of government, schools, prison system, and things like that, to try to restore the resources. The fact that these dollars got included was a big deal, and I want to take this moment to thank publicly your legislative delegation for responding to you on that. Senator Kelly Ward, Representatives Goodell and Representative Barelli really took your items to the Capitol, and it really helped us get these dollars in. We still have a lot of work to do, and we're hopeful that that delegation will continue to help us going forward. So I'll move through the bill piece of it a little bit more quickly. I mentioned that a lot of what we do is just dealing with the hundreds of bills that come into the legislative process. We take a package of bills to the legislature each year. They're listed for you here. Four of our issues made it to the finish line. Four of them did not. It's all part of the long, laborious process of getting a bill enacted into law. Most problematic for us were the non-restoration of SLIF money at State Lake Improvement Funds. Those are big dollars for river communities. Those were swept to fund the State Parks Department during the recession. They rightfully should be back here, and so we have more work to do there. And then Senate Bill 1271 was related to county liens and abatements. Senator Ward introduced that bill and diligently tried to advance it, but the relevant committee chairs would not hear it. And so to the extent we take that bill back for Mojave County, we'll need to do a little bit more work on that, too. So the two undone tasks on the bill package were the State Lake Improvement Fund and the county lien abatement issue. Now, I want to mention briefly our Partner Association, ACO. They are primarily focused for legislative purposes on the other elected officials, and their legislative agenda reflects that. But what's very important is that we partner very collaboratively on the areas of mutual interest. And so items like HERF, items like resources, they helped out diligently in that effort, too. And Mr. Johnson's leadership of that association made sure they were at the table, engaged, and it helped the whole county coalition be effective this year. Let me take a step to the reactive advocacy side of what we do, because it's one of the areas that I'm most proud of, our legislative team. Because every week, they come to work, and there's a new bill issued or inquiry by a legislator that all of a sudden is their new priority. And they'll engage that issue on your behalf, and given the nature of county governments, which are in the business of implementing state law, you don't do the nice-to-haves, you do the must-haves as it relates to local government operations. We are impacted by so many bills, and our team has to engage them. You can get a flavor of the policy areas that our team had to have expertise in this past legislative session, but it goes in the basics of county government, criminal justice, special districts, natural resources, and public health. Now, the primary takeaway on the legislative side was that things went very well working with the legislative delegation on issues we were concerned with. Many of the bills were amended to address the concerns you have, and we were able to allow those bills to move forward in the legislative process. Those bills that we had direct concerns with, most of them were stopped in the legislative process, and here's a long list of those for you here, and going on to the next slide as well that I'll offer for your review. Why do we oppose a bill? Well, we generally oppose a bill when a supermajority of supervisors say, "This is going to limit our responsiveness to serve local constituents. This is going to cost local taxpayer monies. This isn't well thought out, and it needs to be slowed down." And this year was a great year for working with state lawmakers to either fix bills of county interests or to just stop ideas that would have impacted your operations negatively. So we're very pleased with that. A quick summary of how this last session wrapped up, and I think this is always important because we're already planning for the next legislative session. So taking stock of where we've been and what we need to build on is all very important. We made incremental progress on our financial items. We still have some work to do going forward. I suspect they'll continue to be on our, high priorities on our agenda. There's a lot of uncertainty at the state legislature about funding. I mentioned the structural deficit, but it's really more than that. There are lawsuits that could upset the apple cart in terms of state financing, related to the Medicaid lawsuit, related to education expenses the state has. And as you know, what unfortunately happens is when the state legislature can't get its books together, it looks down at county coffers. And so that continues to be a significant threat that we all need to be engaged in. But as I mentioned to you as well, the positive thing this year was the great working relationship between lawmakers and county-elected officials. And I was very pleased with the results associated with that, but I have to be very mindful that we're coming into an election season, and there will be changes at the highest levels, in the governor's office and in many of the seats of the legislature. And it just underscores the need to constantly be educating lawmakers about what's relevant to your counties, and that's what we're doing now and will be doing into the fall. Because of its importance, I wanted to take a brief moment on a federal update. There are two, there are many federal issues that are impacting the counties. There are two major ones that we're involved in. One is payment in lieu of taxes, which is a resource that owes you about $3.4 million. And the other is the rulemaking process associated with the Waters of the U.S. regulations. The PILT issue is a big one. Let me save that for just a moment. The Waters of the U.S. item, which is a regulatory action by a federal agency, has the ability of grinding to a halt public works projects across the state of Arizona and costing the taxpayers a substantial amount of money. Every county is concerned about this, and we've met with western states. Every western state's very concerned about it. The federal government has delayed its rulemaking process. Comments are now extended October 20th. A lot of that was done because of the outcry that came. We need to keep the pressure up, and we need to keep educating, talking to our legislative delegation. I've been working with the counties for about 10 years now. This item has typically popped up in Congress, and it's been defeated for the bad policy reasons that were identified. This is an administrative action, so we really need to stay engaged on it and make sure it doesn't go through as it's written. But about PILT, now I mentioned PILT's about 3.6 million. This is a huge deal for all 15 counties, and it's been an all-hands-on-deck item for a few years now. We have to stay engaged in this area. Mr. Johnson, you've been really instrumental on this messaging campaign, and I want to extend my appreciation for that. You've taken the time to go back to DC and make sure our delegation gets it about this item. And all 15 counties need to be similarly engaged, because if this resource goes away, it leads to property tax increases, and it's rightfully our money. You get it, but I wanted to make sure that you know that the quarterbacking of the whole coalition is paying dividends. We just have to keep it together for the long haul. Couple of things about next steps. I mentioned that we're transitioning into planning for the next legislative session. We do not have a Board of Directors meeting in June, July, or August. We participated in ACO in June. Our next Board of Directors meeting is in September. We do meet with the managers twice over the summer to keep the dialogue going. We're hopeful that all of you will be engaged when we get back into September. Know that our policy process is in full swing. Know that our policy process is in full swing. If you have bill suggestions, please get them to us in short order. If you just want to raise them to our professional staff, feel free. Todd and Kristen and the team can look into them for you. But the sooner we get a handle on what's of interest to you, the sooner we can start helping you and increase the potential for success. There are some interim research projects that we're working on and they're listed for you here. A major issue that I'm finding across the state, in addition to transportation, has been indigent defense costs. I think every county budget is struggling with that. And so we've been having a series of dialogues about what can be done. And so we need to put the thinking cap on to identify what kinds of policy options we may have in that regard. It's an uncontrollable cost driver that's occurring out there and it's right on the property tax base for resources. I mentioned our policy development process, so I'll end with a commercial. Our legislative proposals are due August 15th. We're happy to help before that. We are meeting for our strategic planning session in Prescott this year, Yavapai County. Now, you know, Mr. Johnson, my desire typically is to go as far away, to make you drive as far as possible when you come to these meetings, but we'll be right up the road. And we're very hopeful that all of you will take the time to be there. It means a lot to me and my team when you're at the table. And so with that, Madam Chairman, I'd just thank you and I'd be happy to stand for any questions from the board.
Thank you very much and thank you for all the help you've given, me and this board and the counties, this whole year. You and I had a little discussion last month and it had to do with this massive influx of illegals who are being, who are coming to Arizona and the financial impacts it will have on all of us. And I was wondering if any further discussion has been made about the counties coming together and standing as a whole statements? Is there anything, you know, during this downtime, has anyone else come forward? Is it something that we should do? Is it something that we shouldn't do?
Yeah. And Madam Chairman, that's, it's, in my inferring out with your colleagues across the state, it doesn't seem, there is enormous frustration and concern about what's occurring, period. That is definitely the case. There doesn't appear to be the sense that there's an actionable moment for the association itself. There's no doubt that that could change, but I think at this moment, because it's not, it's a federal issue, the state, the governor, the attorney general have key roles in this. I think people are monitoring this to see how it unfolds. That's as an association. There's still certainly latitude for the counties themselves to take particular positions, translate that, those to the members of Congress.
What would be the mechanism if something were to happen and we did want to, several counties wanted to? Is there a way that that can be done during this down, during this down period?
The next, if there was something immediately actionable, then we could convene a special session, but it's pretty rare that we do that and we usually do it for special sessions of the legislature. The next moment for a meaningful dialogue will be in September. And the issue with things like, policy issues like this, there needs to be a substantial amount of education and prep time. So if you were looking at September to bring something to the board, you'd want to get something drafted, an idea, a concept, and get it around as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is no direct route to Prescott from here, just in case you realize that. You talked about the structural deficit at the state. That didn't, even when the downturn came, the state's problems do not come from the downturn. I mean, I'll ask you, they come from their overspending, they're doing away with taxing revenue that they had during the good times, their funding of pet projects. I mean, can you say that their structural deficit came from the downturn or this has been something that's gone on for 20 years with just their own internal policies?
Madam Chair, Mr. Buster, thank you for the incredibly loaded question. So I'll spare commentary, but I'll share some facts. There is no doubt that when counties entered into the recession, in fact, I recall the fall of '07, when the numbers started coming in, counties started convening to address their budget. And they made very quick decisions that helped forestall much bigger problems. We didn't know it was going to continue to linger so long and that continues to cause a problem, but quick action was the order of the day in local government and I think that was very meaningful. The state was much slower to respond to its problem. And early on, what they did was they swept funds, things like HERF, which are your dollars, to fund ongoing expenses, entered into lease-purchase options, bonded against the lottery, did a lot of one-time maneuvers, rolled over expenses to the tune of about $1 billion. So all these items were done to deal with spending at the moment. And those debt burdens or budgetary maneuvers are still on the books. And that's most definitely hampers the ability for the state to get its books in order.
Right. Because like in the last five years, it's been something like $245 million they've taken from counties. And like you said, people might understand, but they sold the lottery, they sold their buildings that they live in, nothing that anybody here would do if they want to balance it. They run over 1,000 bills every year, but yet the budget's always the last thing they do. They always forecast great revenues, which they don't seem to meet. I think that's the problem. Then they come back and put it on the backs of the local taxpayers to fund what they want, instead of going down and doing the job they're elected for. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Any comments?
I'm Craig and your staff. I just want to say that I think you've been doing a great job for the county, for Mojave County, over this last, I guess, two legislative sessions that we've been working with you. So I just wanted to say thank you and let the taxpayers and residents out there know that you've been a very effective ally in Mojave County and Phoenix. So thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And just to dovetail on that, CSA stepped up and did a resolution to help us with the trout, our trout fish hatchery issue, and did it very quickly. And I wanted to thank you and everybody at CSA for enabling that and helping that along. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, items 5A to 35, will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion, minus any items pulled for discussion. Do we have any items?
Madam Chair, I'd like to poll item 29.
Okay. Any other items, supervisors?
Nothing.
Nothing? And I have 5A and 5B.
I have requested 5A.
I just said, I'm requesting 5A and 5B. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda except for items 5A, 5B, and 29.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, 5A. 5A is adoption of border supervisor resolution number 2014-089, a reversion to acreage of Rancho Havasu tract 3705-A, being a recorded subdivision including parcels A and B, and assesses parcel numbers 120-58-001 through 120-58-072, located in the Havasu Heights vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Our P&amp;Z Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I do have somebody signed up for that and that would be Teri Allen.
Good morning. Teri Allen, representing SBC Inc. and affiliated entities, Lake Havasu City. I was told this works. Let's see. Madam Chair and supervisors, the five of you are a team representing all of Mojave County. You all have the same purpose and should be each other's biggest fans. Havasu Heights and vicinity is becoming quite the hotspot for rezone applications. As you can see here is the community. You can see the community of Havasu Heights and the unincorporated area of Havasu Heights. Mainly are comprised of residential homes and forest stables and gravel roads. The homeowners and landowners like living away from the hustle and bustle of city life. Right here in their community will be the proposed 280-site RV park. And in order to show a pattern, I will add another rezone request located in the same vicinity that I will be speaking on probably shortly. Supervisor Moss, does the proposed rezones, rezone of a 280-site RV park fit into the culture of this community and the district you represent? Mr. Harrah Caribou Industries is requesting a general commercial rezone of 200-plus acres of land located less than a half a mile away from Havasu Heights community and the unincorporated residential area in the vicinity. Supervisor Moss, the residents and landowners were not aware of the proposed zoning change due to the archaic 300-foot zoning notification rule. Therefore...
Only BLM would have been notified, even if they were required to be notified.
If the rezone to general commercial use is approved and the RV park doesn't work out, over 200 acres of land will have been rezoned as general commercial and the possibilities are endless of what can be constructed in its place. We are requesting the general commercial rezone of APN numbers 12058001 through 12058072 be denied. Supervisors, you just waived a wand of approval over 10 or so zoning, rezoning applications. Can you be certain that what is happening within, that what's happening in Supervisor Moss's district isn't happening in one of yours? Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone who wants to ask any questions?
I'd like to make a comment on that. When it comes to these rezones, I believe notices are sent out to adjacent landowners. Is that not correct, Mr. Hendricks?
That's correct. Supervisor Moss, notices are sent out in accordance with state law.
And this particular rezone was sent out to the residents in the Havasu Heights area?
I'm going to have to call on Chris Ballard.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor Moss, 5A and 5B. 5A is a reversion to acreage. It's a reversion to acreage of a previously platted subdivision, Rancho Havasu. 5B is the adoption of a resolution to establish preliminary plat or to approve a preliminary plat for a replacement subdivision that will provide for, provide for an RV subdivision.
The question was whether or not the notice of these revisions, reversions, and reapprovals had been sent out to the residents of Havasu Heights.
5A and 5B are considered administrative actions. In those cases, we do notice in the newspaper, but notices are not sent for reverses to acreage or approval of preliminary plat to neighboring residents.
Historically, when we've had these issues show up, I've heard that we did do mailings to adjacent landowners. Is there a different, what distinguishes this process from that prior process?
The processes where we do send notices out to residents include plan amendments, rezones, and use permits. The plan amendment, of course, that kind of changes the landscape of possible zones that is available, that are available for a property. The rezones themselves change the possible, actually do change, the land uses that a property can be put into, as do use permits. They change the uses as well.
What newspaper was this published in, these?
These items would have been published in two newspapers, one of which would have been, the newspaper published in the county seat, Kingman Daily Minor. The other would have been Today News Herald, which is published out of Lake Havasu.
Okay. Now, I'd like to make a comment to the person who spoke and to the rest of the board on this particular issue. And there's two competing issues in my mind here, two distinct issues that are in opposition to one another. The first is, I like landowners getting notice before their care, direct notice before their property values or their property, the nature of their properties change. And I don't think publishing in a newspaper, even though it's legally, technically correct, does provide actual notice. Most people, I don't subscribe to the newspaper anymore. I get it online, for example. So I read the Kingman Daily Minor, I read the Havasu News Herald, but I read it online. The second issue here, so that's a benefit to the lady who spoke. That's in fairness to you. The downside to this, though, is I like rezones. And the reason I like rezones is because I don't like zoning. I think that people have a property right to do what they like with their property. And if you want to safeguard your scenic view, I think the American, what I consider to be the proper response, is you buy the property that safeguards your scenic view, your quiet neighborhood. So that's the two competing principles I have in my mind on this. So in fairness, even though I think in balance I would be very likely to approve this rezone if it came back to me, but in fairness, I think it should go back to the Planning and Zoning Board and I would like to have the residents of Havasu Heights given direct the notice of this item.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, I'd like to apologize to you. It was my intent on my statement to say that we complied with the law on notification and Planning and Zoning and Development Services always do. I'd like to bring up to the board that I believe regarding the airport issue, we were asked by the board to expand our notification. Now, there was some question that arose with that directive because generally when somebody rezones their property, they're familiar with what's required of them in relation to costs and to notifications and costs associated with that. When the board expanded the requirement for the applicant to notify Havasu Heights, there was some question from staff on who actually pays for that notification. Should we put it on the applicant and require something additional than what was being required by state law? Or should the department absorb that cost? And generally, we try to do fee-for-service in the development services. And I just wanted to bring up that issue if we are going to expand notification requirements. If we did look at that in relation to what we're doing throughout the county, possibly we need to look at our rules and regulations and place that in the rules and regulations so that we don't catch any applicants off-guard on additional notification requirements or additional requirements that are outside of our rules and regulations.
And I do appreciate that what characterizes you, bringing up a budgetary issue, a finance issue. What I have stated as being the two competing principles here, I think, are what I could say, basically would be fairness issues to the residents. And regardless, I think the most important thing before government action is that we do provide what I would call proper notice, fair notice. And sometimes the legal requirements, I don't think necessarily provide that fair, effective notice to our residents. And I'm very hesitant to use government power without that fair, effective notice being provided, which I'm distinguishing from legal notice.
Right. Madam Chair, I think we get into a problem though when we start not following state law. We've, the applicant has gone through all the steps they're supposed to go through. Now we're going to change where boundaries, who needs to be notified, where do we stop? I think that's why they put a law into place. And when you stop a project from going forward, then you have money because they've already gone through planning and zoning and if, I don't know this company, if they're, they have money, so they're waiting on, they're borrowed money or not, but it's kind of, I think it's arbitrary on our part while you want the people to be notified if the law was followed, I think we have to go ahead and approve.
Well, this is where I agreed with everything you said, Supervisor Johnson, up to the last moment, okay? Which seems to be a common occurrence. Yes, I do agree that the developer has put money into this process, has gone through planning and zoning, who's given us an advisory opinion. But that developer has no property rights whatsoever unless we approve the rezone because we're not obligated to do that. So that's where I break with your analysis. And I do agree with the ultimate result. If what I consider fair and effective notice had been given, I would be very inclined to vote for 5A and 5B. But I'm not because I don't think fair and effective notice has been given.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we deny... I move that we deny item 5A and 5B of this agenda.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion dies in lack of a second. Do I have another motion?
Motion for approval of 5A and 5B.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, 5A. Before we go on to 5B, I apparently made an error. Item nine on the consent agenda had been pulled, and I didn't realize that I had to pull it out and say that. So how can we rectify this easily?
Will reconsider?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Madam Chair, just pull it for no action then, once we reconsidered it.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, that was easy.
All right, on to 5B. Adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2014-090, subdivision preliminary plan for DSRVE at Lake Havasu Track 3709, being a proposed subdivision on assessor's parcel number 120-58-001 through 120-58-072, located in the Havasu Heights vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. And this, too, is voted unanimously by our P&amp;Z Commission. I do, Ms. Allen has been signed up to vote to speak with this, to this as well? That covered everything, okay.
I move that we deny 5B.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Okay, that dies in, for a lack of a second. Another motion?
Most approve 5B.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that carries. Now off to number 29. Sitting as the Board of Directors at the Mojave County Library District, accept donation of $43,000 from the Friends of the Meadview Library and direct staff to design and construct a new enclosed porch expansion of the Meadview Community Library at a maximum project cost of $43,000 funded by the donation from the Friends of the Meadview Community Library.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a comment on this issue, and that's why I had it polled. Basically, I just wanted to thank the Meadview Friends of the Library, the Meadview Civic Association, Mike Hendricks, Steve Lekowski, and Kathy Pennell. But most importantly, I wanted to thank Supervisor Joy Brotherton. She's the one that helped the community get this all together, and it's quite a big deal for Meadview. I was out there yesterday, and several people mentioned that this was pretty exciting for the community of Meadview, so just wanted to give some kudos out there and thank everybody that was involved. And I now make a motion that we approve it as written.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, and that's it for consent agenda. On to the public hearings. I open public hearing up for number 36. Discussion of Possible Action: Adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2014-097, Amendment to Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 97-3, Setting forth a zoning use permit for private landing strip and airplane hangar on assessor's parcels numbers 120-22-044 through, dash, 048, in an A-R/36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to amend the legal description to include assessor's parcel numbers 120-22-052 and 120-22-006, and to clarify and add to the uses allowed by the zoning use permit in the Havasu Heights vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. This was approved by unanimous vote of our P&amp;Z Commission, but they added a condition that traffic, both landing and takeoff, not be allowed to fly over Havasu Heights. I do have several people who signed up to speak to this. So first off, Tim Ryan, please come up and state your name and address. Is there a Tim Ryan here?
Yeah. Question I'll be with you. I go first.
Okay. Arlo Cox?
I'm a proponent. I could answer the questions at the end or can speak.
Okay, you want, would you rather do that? Okay. Michael Centefanti?
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Supervisors. I'm Mike Centefanti, resident in Mojave County, 36 years. Resident in Havasu Heights, 19 years. I had seven or eight more additional people coming today, but they had storm damage from the big storm we had last night and had to stay home. We have supplied the board a four-part packet describing our concerns on this revision to the airport, or the airport expansion. We believe that any one part of them is sufficient rationale to support a denial of the applicant's request. Now, what would happen if the applicant, if you do deny it? All we're doing is restoring the applicant to where you find him. He keeps his property, he has his private airport, and would be required to open the road up if it gets obstructed again, and, and to open the washes if they are restricted, or obstructed. Now, he pays his expenses already made, which you take your own risk when you don't get the permit ahead of time. So I don't consider legalization of what he did prior appropriate to support a, an approval. So based on all the written submissions that we made to you, plus the additional people that will be speaking here today, we request a no vote on the application. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, now Terry Allen?
Terry Allen, representing SBC Inc. and affiliated entities, Lake Havasu City. Madam Chair and Supervisors, we'll show this one here for a minute. As previously stated, Havasu Heights and vicinity is a hotspot for rezone applications, and the culture of the community is comprised of residential homes, horse stables, and gravel roads. In order to show a pattern, I have added this RV park. The applicant, Mr. Cox, has requested the rezone amendment in order to expand his present runway and add an additional crosswind runway. During the April 7th Planning and Zoning Meeting, Mr. Cox stated he wanted to have an ultralight fly school. Then on the June 11th Planning and Zoning Meeting, Mr. Cox stated he wanted to build homes and add up to 11 hangars. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved the rezone twice with the blessing of Mr. Haunt, Director of Mojave County Development Services. Mr. Haunt, you must be very proud to have such an exceptional team representing the Planning and Zoning Department. It is my pleasure to have worked with, with them over the past couple of months. Every time I called to ask a procedural or technical question, they were professional, knowledgeable, and efficient. On April 7th, Mr. Haunt was at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, and I had observed him coddling the applicant, Mr. Cox, in the front row so the commissioners could have a clear view of the two of them together. In addition, Mr. Haunt, you stated in the News Herald you think Mr. Cox wants to build an additional strip that would, and a cross runway. You also stated that you are aware that Mr. Cox has begun construction and you would legalize it after the zoning change is approved. This is a Google Earth shot of construction underway at Mr. Cox's property where it appears that, well, I'll go on. Supervisor Moss, does the proposed amendment and the airport expansion fit into the culture of this community? And we already know your answer. We are opposed to the amendment, BOS. Well, let's see. Mr. Haunt, you do not uphold the rules and the procedures of Mojave County, and you certainly don't care how these rezones will adversely affect the residents of Havasu Heights and vicinity. Mr. Haunt, you should be fired and the Planning and Zoning Commission...
Madam Chairman?
...should be kicked.
I think this is out of order.
That's, that's all for you. Please sit down. Okay, we have Mr. Chris Nixon, or Miss? No, do it again.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for allowing me this time to speak. As you know, we had a very bad storm last night, and so we don't have a lot of people here that can come and be represented. We have people that are poverty-stricken, we have people that are not. The ones that are not are helping those whose roofs are gone, who have no other resource. So please keep that in mind, that there are more people behind us than just showed today. First off, the old saying is, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Not if it ain't broke, break it. I can see absolutely no benefit in allowing anyone to speculate in Havasu Heights. We like our present zoning. We bought for that reason. And I feel that we have every reasonable expectation, when we buy out there, to have what we think we bought, which is not an airport runway. I have no problem with the existing one. I had some problems at the last meeting when we were not allowed to rebut the fact that presently, the way it stands now, our houses are buzzed, close to our houses by those planes. The first 15 minutes, they're fun to watch, they're cute. After that, they're about as friendly as a chainsaw. They're not fun. We don't want that there. The present airport, we have no problems with. We haven't complained. We're not complainers until you take away our lifestyle and our property values. I believe Mojave County has an obligation to honor and enforce existing zoning laws to protect homeowners from any infringement that does not benefit the majority of the constituents, to protect and preserve the fragile desert environment, and to promote thoughtfully planned growth in areas that want and welcome zoning changes. That's not us. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present my argument against the proposed airport expansion, and to remind people that a conscientious government has an obligation and responsibility to protect its citizens from predatory private interests. Please don't pave paradise and put up a parking lot. We love our homes, we love our neighbors. We're fine the way we are. Mr. Moss, thank you so much in your effort to support us against others who have chosen not to. Thank you again for your time and for allowing me to speak for others who cannot make it. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, Dolly Centefant? Okay, now does Tim Ryan want to speak?
Hello, my name's Tim Ryan. I live at 7568 Linden Road in Havasu Heights, and I'm here to support what everybody else is saying and to oppose this ruling on this airport and expansion of property where he wants to grow the airport. Not only does it bring more hazards around our area, like the lady said, to our community, we moved out there because it was quiet and peaceful, and we have animals, and we love that livelihood. And now with the planes that they're already there, even though he's just one man, it's already spooking the animals and causing problems. How big is this going to be? What are you guys approving? Is there an overall plan? Is there an overall sketch showing how many hangars are going to be there? How long the runway is going to be? Are they going to fly at night? Are they going to put lights in at the runway? Where does the FAA get involved? How can you approve something for a gentleman that we don't even know if the FAA will allow what his expansion is going to do? What knowledge do you guys actually have of the overall development that this man can go to that we don't, we don't know? There's nothing out there. Yeah, like I said, how long is the runway going to be? Are they going to fly at night? The majority of the community opposes this. And Mr. Moss said, you know, people should be able to buy a piece of property and do whatever they want to do on it. Well, what about the airspace? What about the noise? Do they have control over that? Do you want somebody to move next to you in your home and run dirt bikes in their backyard? Five hours a day? Would you like that? I don't think so. Your neighborhood, would they like that? I don't think so. So...
I believe I can answer that question for you, sir. You do own the airspace above your house up to the point where the FAA begins to regulate it. Where that cutoff point is, I do not know.
Okay. I'm taking your word on that, but what about the noise? Do you put a wall up through the air and stop the noise?
I can't answer that question for you, sir.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Arlo Cox, I believe you're the petitioner in this.
My name's Arlo Cox. I live at 7521 Skyview. I also have roof damage, so I'd like to get out of here, too. There is a lot of confusion on this. The airport really is not expanded. It's 1,800 foot long. I'll just put some that are out here. It's a very small airport. It is not getting longer. Just by size alone restricts it in the aircraft. I've heard jet engines, I've heard a lot of things that's going to be out there. It's, if you take Sun Valley's as close, it's 3,700 feet long, has 107 lots. Mine would have a total of, if we expand. Right now, it would have seven. If we did some development, it could get up to 11 lots. Our lots are bigger, about twice the size of anything in Havasu Heights. Yes, we may have homes out there someday. It may work, it may not. But as far as, we're not changing really the airport, we're only asking to have two lots adjoining it, be allowed to use it, and it's as much to inform residents as they come to move there. There is an airport as opposed to leaving it to the five in the airport there. In '97, when this was approved, the airport was roughly 1,800 feet long. It's still 1,800 foot long. If you have any other questions?
Mr. Cox, how many flights a day go in and out of that, your little airport?
At this point, I would guess, when my grandkids are here, probably 15 a day, 20 a day. On an average, I would guess five a week.
On an average, five a week? And, and after all your plans, what do you expect it to?
Expect, you know, I would take, kind of relation of Sun Valley. You know, they're running 16, which is actions or operations, I should say, and an operation is either a takeoff or a landing. So they get roughly eight airplanes per day for 107 lots. If we reduce that by 10, we would have maybe one a day.
Okay.
You know, I can't, I won't profess to say what will exactly happen. I hope maybe there'd be a second home. I'm going to put my house out there, so there may be a little more activity just for me.
Okay.
And one for your, your thought on, we didn't meet the legal, we met the legal requirements on notice for everybody, and the state law requires 300 foot from a journey. We noticed all the way up to two miles roughly, and to get all of Havasu Heights. We skipped over people that were in between it. I did notice them. I went to the people that do live out there and just told them, just because trying to be a good neighbor. If you're going to do this and require others, try to find a limit, you know, whether it's 300, 500, 1,000, 2,000 foot as far as a notice, then people would know what they're getting into, as opposed to make your application and then come back and say, "You met the legal limit, but we're not really liking that. We want something different." Thank you for your time.
Okay, is there any questions?
Madam Chair, I do have a question. The commission recommended that there is a requirement that landing and takeoffs not occur over Havasu Heights residents. What power do you have to prevent a pilot from not landing or taking off over Havasu Heights residents?
We basically can set up the flight pattern, but as far as totally controlling a pilot when they're in the air, I have no... when they're in the air, I have no authority to do that. Recommended, the standard is a left-hand pattern into both. At this time, we would change it from a left-hand to a right-hand pattern for 3-0, which would make them turn the other direction if they follow the rules.
So if, so this condition, that traffic, both landing and takeoff, not to be allowed to fly over Havasu Heights, doesn't mean anything?
Well, it means I put up something asking that.
Right, but there's no way to, no punishment, no nothing?
No, because right now, it's in the flight pattern, that area is in the flight pattern for Lake Havasu. There's quite a few airplanes fly through there now, going to Lake Havasu.
Well, I have a question. If something is approved unanimously on a condition that can't be met, what is that really mean?
I think, Madam Chair, it's FAA matter, it's not ours. They've tried, we've tried to do this before, and we have no authority to do it.
But that's how they did it, so, I mean...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Supervisor Johnson. I would like to find out if you know how long it would take before the aeronautical maps would show your airstrip and indicate that it's non-typical with right-hand patterns only. How long would that take?
If I apply, I'm not required even to apply. As you put it on the map, that more or less invites people in. I'm debating whether I'll even put that into the aeronautical maps, because I also have an airport in Colorado. It is not advertised. The only person that's ever been taken off or land is me. If you don't advertise it, you're not inviting people in. And there is a question. We can do that. I would put all of the requirements, as I've done in mine, on the ground, on a sign saying, "Don't fly over Havasu Heights," and that's easier to control, because there are usually people I know. But to go through the process is roughly six to nine months, but it's also, the FAA and the last one that was supposed to be a month to get one, an airplane purchased, took 11, so...
Okay, I understand then. But to date, you have complied with all the county regulations and the FAA regulations?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think, Madam Chair, we might ask Ms. Ballard, but we've done these before for quite a few places around the county, and when we've asked people like this gentleman to restrict flying, they've told their pilots not to. I don't believe we've had really any problems that way, Ms. Ballard.
Supervisor Johnson, Madam Chairman, members of the board. The Commission doesn't typically place a condition on, has a limitation on flight pattern. Our only point of enforcement is actually making sure that whatever flight patterns are registered with the FAA do show that the flight pattern turns away from Havasu Heights. We, Mojave County, as correctly pointed out, once the pilot's in the air, or once, you know, the plane takes off, it's a matter for FAA and not local jurisdiction.
But in the past, with the other ones that we've done, I know there's been a lot of discussion. Have you had numerous complaints from those in the previously that we've had, or is it just, once it's approved, everything seems to go okay?
Mr. Johnson, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Typically, once approved, we don't receive complaints on these airfields. I think that's probably for a couple of reasons. Mr. Cox is correct, the level of activity is not that great. The other is that, for the most part, the pilots are compliant. There is one exception to this pattern in South Mojave Valley. We do have an airport down there that's causing quite a bit of, that has in the past caused quite a bit of, a number of complaints to come into our office.
I guess that's all, Madam Chair.
I have one other question. I also heard, or I read somewhere, that you are going to be operating a flight school from that location? Is that true?
No, actually, that's, I have no intention right now of running a flight school. I am not a CFI. I've asked for my personal use. I fly an experimental. If I were to take any one of you up, right now, I'd do it at no cost, because it's an experimental. If I'm a CFI, which I may become, if I take somebody up, then I can share costs in it and recover some. That is the extent of it, but no, there is no intention of having a flight school out there.
If you were to do that, is there something that would come back to us at some point for that? Or is that, once we grant this, you can do that at any time?
I'd have to check your rules. I don't know.
Let's ask.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, the revision in the resolution does allow, excuse me, I believe 10 hours of flight instruction per week.
10 hours per week? Is it? That's a lot. That's a lot.
If I can add something, Madam Chair?
Sure.
I would like to add to what Ms. Ballard stated about the South Mojave Airport issue. That was a problem that plagued Mr. Extrim and I for several months. It has since been resolved with the cooperation of the individual who actually owns the runway, because he has now directed traffic away from the residences, and he has the power to basically throw airplanes out if they don't comply with his suggestions, which I have not heard being the case here.
Mr. Cox, would you please?
Yes.
How long have you owned the property?
I've had the property approximately five years.
How many, five? Five years?
Yes.
Okay. The only question I have.
Yeah, I just have a bit of an issue, because I know that there was a lot of talk, a lot of input, and a lot of discussion when this went before P&amp;Z. And the fact that they unanimously voted with a condition that can't be met, that bothers me on a lot of levels. And now with some of these unknowns, and, you know, I think that this is something that needs to be talked about more. And now that, so you're saying that, you know, the people who live in Havasu Heights, they were notified, but now the people that, where you go the other direction, have they all been notified?
No, it's in, excuse me.
Go ahead.
The people between the airport and Havasu Heights, there are two homes, so I notified both of them. They're both in favor of it, but...
So how many, how many people does this really involve? How many homes? Several hundred? And they've all, have they all been notified?
There were, I believe, and I speak for the county, there's approximately 200 and some that were notified in Havasu Heights.
Maybe you could put up a map, Chris, to show the relationship. We're pushing it out quite a ways.
Mr. Johnson, Madam Chairman, I don't know that I can get a map up. I'd have to ask Matt if he can find one on, find a map on item...
Well, you're getting that. When the P&amp;Z was listening to this, and they made this recommendation, were they told? Did they know that this is something, the condition that could not be met? Were they told at that time? Because I've spoken to my P&amp;Z guys, and that is what they said. They didn't say, "Well, we were told that, you know, that this was something doable." I think they were under the impression that that is something that could be done.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I don't recall, probably not. I don't exactly recall what they were told. As I said, we would, we would ask Mr. Cox to change his filings on the airport to make sure that, instead of making a left-hand turn out of the, off the runway, they would make a right-hand turn and move away from Havasu Heights.
Okay.
Yeah, but if, I mean, if the pilot actually went to the left, there are several issues with enforcement, one of which is that we don't have jurisdiction over the space. The second item is, in all reality, when we got into investigating it, we may not be able to determine where that pilot came from. The flight patterns also include Lake Havasu City, and the pilot could be coming out of Lake Hav, coming out of or going into Lake Havasu City.
Okay. There's one more issue unrelated that hasn't been brought up, and that is, it has been told to me that this is also a military training area, that the military uses that airspace. Is that true?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, a significant portion of Mojave County is used for military training, either from the UMA proving grounds out of Luke Air Force Base, and NOLAS may use the flights as well. There are a significant number of flights, mainly in the area of Dutch Flat. This area, it does have some. I cannot tell you what they, what actually they do. I do not believe it's listed as a low-level fly area. It might be.
Okay, so knowing nothing about that kind of thing, is that something that could prove dangerous, or does anybody know?
Yeah. Ms., Madam Chairman, we do require that they comply, that any of the private airfields comply with FAA regulations. Military pilots should be made aware of a flight pattern, potential for a flight pattern under them.
Bill Extrim, can I have a gentleman come up and rerespond?
Madam Chairman, that's your prerogative, Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Centefonte.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I believe I presented to you in those packets the military training routes, and Havasu Heights is in the military training route. It's a low-level tactical, I don't know the exact military term, I've been out of the military too long, but I know it's low-level, because they fly right over my house, in my front yard, I can see the pilot in his jet fighter plane, and they follow the terrain. And that military training route is 10 miles wide, starts it in the vicinity of Highway 95 and I-40, and goes another 50 miles or more down. So we are under that, that situation.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this, before I close the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, when it comes to this issue, again, if I thought that the condition that was added by the Commission could be enforced, I'd be much more favorably inclined to item 36. However, from whatever I'm hearing it from, it's dubious, would be a positive way of saying that. More importantly, this is a rezone, which means that the condition, excuse me, amendment, which means the existing rules allow for landing and takeoffs, that's fine. What we're talking about here is expanding that, and I think the residents in the area have a good point about expansion. They can live with what currently exists, they do not want it expanded. And I can sympathize with that, and for that reason, I would move that we deny item 36.
Okay, I have a motion, and I will second that.
I have a question for discussion. Exactly how far are we going to go out with people? I mean, anybody has a right to voice their objections, but these, Havasu Heights proper is not close to this, this piece of property. You know?
Okay. Supervisor Johnson, I'll answer that for you. You really have to take that on a case-by-case basis, but looking at the map that was just shown up, the section lines are shown, and I think it is roughly a half mile from what they said.
Right, but our state law doesn't say that that comes into it.
But what we're saying here is, I'm not a fan of zoning, I think I've already said that. But what we're saying is that people are coming to ask, and ask to change the existing rules that exist on the ground. And at that point in time, I think residents, whether I like it or not, have the right, with fair notice, to come over and complain, that you're changing the rules on us. The owner has the right to ask for a rezone, he doesn't have a right to, or an amendment, he doesn't have the right to expect it, because that's what he bought. So when it comes to balancing who wins in that particular situation, you take it on a case-by-case basis. And right now, we have a couple people who want to have it expanded, and when it comes to adding, taking the gentleman at his word, and I think he seems like a reliable, trustworthy man, to expanding it by a couple more people. We have many people who are saying enough is enough. You know, there comes a time when the straw breaks the camel's back. And I'm at the point where saying, I agree with them. Some other similar issue could come up next month, and I would go the other way, because it's a case-by-case analysis, under the existing system that we have, which I don't particularly care for. But that's the, that's the analysis we have to go for, go through. And that's why I oppose item 36.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wait, wait, all, wait, wait, what are we doing? This is for the deny, what was the motion?
The motion was to deny item 36. So if we vote in favor, we're voting to deny item 36.
All right, so all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have item 37. Open public hearing, discussion of possible action, adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2014098. Denial, this is a denial of a rezone of Assessors Parcel Number 324-12-038, from an AR/1/1A single-family residential 1-acre minimum lot-size zone to an AR agricultural residential 1-acre minimum lot-size zone to allow personal livestock in the North Kingman vicinity, northwest side of Abel Drive, between Diagonal Way and Sun Haven Lane, Mojave County, Arizona. And the P&amp;Z Commission recommended denial by a vote of 5 to 3. Commissioners Buck, Jones, and Simmons, Simons, is it Simons? Voted against the motion. We do have someone who's patiently waited to speak, and that would be Darlene Gerhart.
Madam Chairman, and members of the board, thank you for your time. All I ask is, I want a postponement until next time you have a meeting. I am waiting for some information from planning and zoning, and I'll be better prepared at your next meeting, if that's possible. Thank you.
Okay, I, does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, thank you. So you were, you wanted to, you wanted this to be postponed till next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And tell me again why?
Pardon me?
What are the reasons that you want it postponed?
I'm waiting for some more information from planning and zoning.
Okay.
For my presentation, and I really need the information.
Oh, I see. Okay, you know, I spoke to our planning and zoning people, and there seems to be some issues about these zonings, and what's being enforced and what's not being enforced, and I would be amenable to postpone this so we can get more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Can I go? Am I done?
You, yes, you can sit down. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we postpone item 37 for a period of approximately 30 days.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Bikes, could interject. Point of order. Are you closing the hearing?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, I'm closing the public hearing. Okay, that's done. Now, motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we postpone item 37 for approximately 30 days.
And I second the motion.
Discussion? I, Madam Chair, I have a problem. We continue to continue these and send them back to planning and zoning. They've given us a recommendation. I heard nothing from the lady to postpone a vote, and it's gone through a hearing. That's just my opinion.
Right, and I do understand that, but it was a split vote, and based on some of this new information that's come up about what's been enforced, and I want to know, I want to get all the information as well, so we can make some, an intelligent decision as how we're going to do this, because I know that you've worked very hard, and if we're going to do these things, we want equal, it to be enforced equally.
Madam Chair, if I could say something? I think actually, because there is, Supervisor Johnson's correct, there is a history on this board that we postpone many things. But I think that's actually a credit to the board, because we receive information, and we want to do our due diligence, and we're not simply a rubber stamp. I mean, it's our job to do our own independent analysis, and sometimes that takes time. So I think it's a good idea, and if we do it, I think landowners who can come up to us and ask for the same courtesy, to say, "There's more information out there, I'd like time to gather it," to say, there's more information out there, I'd like time to gather it, and we would say, I would hope, sure. You know, what we would take ourselves, we're willing to give to you on a case-by-case basis to make sure everyone has a fair bite at the apple.
Very good. So we have a motion and?
Father, just to go along with that, I don't believe this board assumes that we're a rubber stamp for them, but the applicant has gone through a planning and zoning hearing. It now was put on the board where all the backup and information could have been brought forward. So I, I just believe we should be handling these as they come forward. That's all.
So noted. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, open public hearing for number 38. Discussion of possible action. Adoption of Mojave County Ordinance 2014-02 to amend the Mojave County zoning ordinance, Section 31.h.4, sign ordinance, off-premise signs regarding provisions of their location, minimum separation, and relationship to designated scenic routes and vistas. The Commission, P&amp;Z Commission, recommended approval by unanimous vote. We have one person signed up. Brad Larson.
Hello, Madam Chairman, Board. I'm Brad Larson from White Hills, Arizona. And we have Rosie's Den.
Address, please. Can you please state your address?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you please state your address for the record?
Yeah, it's 19949 North Highway 93, White Hills, Arizona.
Thank you.
And been a resident out there for 30 years, and we own Rosie's Den, the restaurant and the cafe out there. And we want to do, we're hoping that the board sees fit to, to change the moratorium that was on there for the, for the off-sale permits for the last 16 years, which is absolutely business hindering by not having a billboard for anybody, Kingman included. We would like, we've got about 10 billboards going northbound, but we've only got six going southbound in a, about a 70, well, from Hoover Dam to Kingman. And we went through planning, zoning, and they think it's a good idea. And we respectfully request that we lower the minimum so at least we can get some more billboards up. Not a bunch. We don't like a lot. They're all clustered in about two areas coming down 93. So we like our darkness too, you know? But with the Chevron out there and then the last stop, we have two areas with lights out there. And we want the billboards concentrated in the lighted areas, not in the, in the, the in-between areas where, you know, it's desert beautification. So we don't want to go overboard, but we do want to lower the minimums on it so we can at least have some growth for our businesses, including Kingman.
Okay.
That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve item 38 of the agenda.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item 39. Open public hearing. The discussion of possible action to approve the requested changes to the voter registration fee structure. I have no one signed up for this. Anyone like to speak to this? Okay, closed public hearing. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, that concludes our public hearing. Let's take, can we take a five-minute break before we get to the regular agenda? It's going to be a longer than expected meeting. Five minutes. Is this working? Hello? Yeah, all right. Okay, we're now on the regular agenda. Number 40. Excuse me, if everyone can just take their seats and, thank you. Number 40. Sitting as the Board of Directors of Mojave County Flood Control District. Discussion of possible action. Approve maintaining the flood control district tax rate of .5000 per $100 of assessed value for fiscal year 2014.
Madam Chairman, we're still waiting for Supervisor Watson.
I'm always looking this way. Okay, well. Okay, are we going to, all right, well, you know what? I'm just going to wait two more minutes for him, okay? I said five minutes?
You apparently, Madam Chairman.
If there's any discussion, we can go ahead. I mean, Supervisor Watson will be here.
Discuss. Anyone? Nothing to discuss?
I will, I will kind of lump this together a little bit, but when it comes to the flood control in the library district, I believe that those are providing vitally important community services to Mojave County. We, I don't think that we should be cutting those particular tax rates. I do believe that even though the county revenues are falling because of decreased property values and collections, that we need to maintain them the same, and because we can't interrupt vital flood control services. And I think that to the extent that we have a reduced collection rate that Mike Hendricks and his wonderful flood control team will make do. And so I don't want to upset the apple cart on that particular tax rate.
I guess the question I'd have for Supervisor Moss, he's not reading these books online, is he?
I'm sorry?
You're not reading our books online, are you, for the library?
Oh, no, I'm reading the agenda item here. The back of the material.
The newspapers you're reading online is one to make sure you weren't bypassing our library by reading all the books online.
Oh, no, no, no. I do, I do have Amazon Kindle. I do confess.
All right, I do feel uncomfortable without Supervisor Watson here. I would like, I would like him for the record to be here for these votes.
I don't mind extending the break another five minutes, Madam Chair. It's going to be a long meeting anyway, with five minutes more.
Well.
And besides, it's very rare that I see Mr. Timco in a suit and tie.
Well, if that's okay, it's my fault. I always tend to look to my right, not to my left, so sorry about that, guys, to my left. So if no one objects, can we just wait for Supervisor Watson?
I have no problem with that, Madam Chair.
We sort of began, we already talked about item 40, which is the flood control rate. Is there anything you'd like to add on that number 40 on the regular agenda?
No.
Okay, you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve item 40 of the agenda, that we do not increase the tax rate for the flood control district, and instead we maintain it at its current level of .5 per $100 of assessed value.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 41. Sitting as the Board of Directors of Mojave County Library District. Discussion of possible action. Approve maintaining the library district tax rate of .3236 per $100 of assessed value for fiscal year 2015.
Madam Chair, if I may? I will reiterate my comments on the flood control district. Flood control, I think, is a health and safety issue. I think the library district is a political and individual liberty issues because you cannot have a educated populace which can participate in an elective republic without having libraries, whether it's Albert Einstein or Keith Richards or the Rolling Stones, a Republican named Eisenhower or a Democrat named Kennedy. We need to protect our citizen's access to libraries and to expand those libraries, both in rural areas like Yucca and Chloride and Dolan Springs, Meadview, Mojave Alley, which we recently accomplished, thank you very much, while continuing to approve the services that we provide to the residents in the major cities like Kingman. And I think that means that even though we're not going to increase the tax rate, yes, I talk a long time. I know that. Increase the tax rate, we need to maintain it, we need to decline increasing it, but we need to maintain it at its current level of .3236 per $100 of assessed value so we can continue to provide this critical service to our public despite the reduction in actual collections.
I'll second that. Did you get all of that?
She's brilliant.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Point of order, I believe you need to get out of the photo, carry.
Oh, we already did. This, we're on the regular agenda. Okay. So I have a motion and a second on item 41. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to reconsider item 40 to correct the date.
I'm sorry?
This is 2014. I second Supervisor Johnson's motion.
Good catch. Good catch. I've read it too. Okay.
I, Madam Chair, if Supervisor Johnson's motion is one of reconsideration, I would then move to restate my original motion, but to clarify and correct the printed terms of the agenda to state that it concerns fiscal year 2015.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're on to 42. Sitting as the Board of Directors of Mojave County Television District. Discussion of possible action. Approve maintaining the television district tax rate of .0867 per $100 of assessed value for fiscal year 2015.
Madam Chair, if I could, this is where I digress, or I changed my mind from items 40 and 41. I think the TV district, on balance, is probably a good idea for Mojave County. But I do believe the actual collections into the
the actual collections into the TV district exceed the costs of maintaining that district. And since we are a Republican Board of Supervisors, and all of us, I believe, are fiscally responsible and very conservative, I think we should consider reducing the TV tax rate. I'm not suggesting a number, I think it's something that we need to discuss entirely as a board in the next few minutes, but I think it needs to come down, either a little bit or a lot, but it needs to come down. We need to show the taxpayers that we're looking at not only dealing with decreased collections, but that we have a desire to decrease the rate if and when we can, and I think this is an area that we can.
Okay. I will have something to say about this. There was a lot of talk about the TV district in the last couple of years.
Can you give a second for discussion?
No.
We're just discussing right now.
We're just discussing. And when I first came in, I spoke about if the TV district was even necessary, what their government's responsibility is to provide people with their entertainment. I learned, after I took office, that there was a little bit more involved, it had to do with safety and emergency information and things like that, and I heard from the people. It was one of those things, I put it out there, and I heard back from the people that they want the television district, and I respect that. But when I went back and looked at the budget and the books, it appears that we have been collecting much more money than we needed, to the tune of, in 2012, we had about, what, about $7 million in that fund, more than what we needed. We were only supposed to collect what we need to run these things, and it was, it was approved in 2012 by the previous board, that they were gonna sweep that money to pay the jail debt service, and although, you know, you can debate whether or not that was a good thing, we all went along with it, and that was done, but we're still, that brings us back to, we're still collecting much more than we need. And although people are gonna argue that it's a small amount, and on your average residential tax bill, it is a small amount, I think on mine it's $14, but I have a tax bill from a friend of mine who owns a business in Fort Mojave, where he pays almost $17,000 a year, $17,000. He just built this business, and that's something we'll talk about another time, but his TV district cost this year was $107, and that's, that's a lot, that's a lot, for something I'm sure he doesn't use, and, you know, I still believe it's kinda discretionary. I believe that we could down that, so, and now it's just how much. You know, we don't wanna do something drastic just in case, and I would like to hear from staff about the, when I first came on, I heard that, that we do have an emergency, that this does provide emergency services should there be some kind of catastrophic event in Mojave County, and now I'm hearing that we don't, that now maybe we need to keep this money for, for stuff that we need to do, so if you can please explain that to me, what and what this, this TV district does and does not do.
Madam Chair?
As far as emergency.
Madam Chair, maybe if.
If I can get in before we get to the staff, I believe the surplus that we had before, we were looking at the changeover that had, that was required by federal law, and so the TV district saved money up. Our staff was able to go and get grants to cover that, and that's why we had that excess funds that were in the TV district. And I'm just with you, sweeping, good or bad, was done, it paid off debts, which, which worked out well. I believe that the .8 cents that we're collecting is not gonna make a difference if we go to seven, six, or five in anybody's tax bill, and I think that we, as you can see from yesterday with the disaster that we had, or the local disasters that came in, people were without power for up to seven hours, I believe, in the Havasu area and other areas, communications and those, those issues that we have to address. I think that staff is looking at using TV district funds to make sure that people can receive up-to-date information in the case of an emergency, whether it be fire, or rain, or whatever it happens to be, and hopefully we're looking at ways to find, to either fund a, our own television station or radio station, and connect with the public to say, hey, you're gonna have to have a battery-operated TV or a battery-operated radio, so in case of an emergency, like in the Havasu area, for seven hours, people were without communication. So, if you could've said, hey, every hour on the hour, we're gonna broadcast something to tell you, you know, power will be restored within four hours, or water stations are available here, you know, throughout the county, that's, that's kinda why I think that, with the rate we have, I will vote to continue the rate, just for emergencies.
So, you're saying you want people to have electric TVs?
For, they can have for the battery-operated, either radio or television, whichever way we decide to use the broadcasting network.
Don't we have some kind of radio thing now? I mean, that's what I was told last, last year, that we have, I mean, all these years, we have no way? I thought that was what the TV district was enacted for the first time, was because of emergency services.
I think it works, but only if we have power. I mean, we have to be able to broadcast, there are some stations that'll broadcast emergencies for us, but I think we're dependent upon, and I'll just use, whatever radio station or TV station that is, if they have power, emergency backup, say in a long-term power outage, I think the more we're dependent upon ourselves and not outside agencies.
Don't we get, don't we get grants, Homeland Security FEMA grants for that kind of emergency? I was looking at, someone gave me all the lists, we get a lot of money for that kinda stuff, and is it, is it even legal to take money from the TV district for something, you know, it sounds related, but it's really not. I mean, there's specific laws and statutes that guide what we can use that money for.
Madam Chairman, you've asked quite a few questions, and I might not have all the answers to them. One of the things that, we do have emergency broadcast capabilities, unfortunately, our emergency management director isn't here today to explain that to us, we could certainly ask him to give the board a briefing at some future date. One of the things, you know, during the, during the good years, like say 2005, 2006, 2007, these districts that we operate actually experienced some sort of a, what cannot be better described, is a windfall in amount of monies that they were receiving due to the increased valuation, and we're not experiencing that anymore. Some of the monies that we were talking about, and the contingencies that we had been able to accumulate, were because of those good years. And currently, you know, we receive about $1.5 million a year from the TV district, and our expenditures, if we just stayed status quo, would be, let's call it around $400,000 or $500,000. In speaking with Supervisor Johnson, one of the things that Supervisor Johnson's prior, is, he's very concerned about the county's capabilities in an emergency, you know, one of the things that he asks us to look at, and I've got emergency management looking at, is our capabilities and how that can be expanded, and also take a look at whether we have emergency generators for all our translator sites and so forth and so on, and trying, try to come up with a cost to increase our capabilities. One of the things that we have to look at is, depending on the level of disaster that we have, you know, can our current capabilities meet that level of disaster? And I'm not sure they can, because if everything goes out, let's say if the grid, the entire western United States grid drops for whatever reason, and that is a real threat right now, according to our emergency management federal people, that can we actually accommodate keeping our people informed? And what Supervisor Johnson had mentioned to me, is he said, Mike, I need us to look at not only supporting our internal personnel and our critical staff, to be able to have the capability of our, operating our own broadcast system over our network, to where we can send TV signals out to everybody to keep them informed of the disaster and any updates that are necessary. And we don't have that level of capability, and quite frankly, Madam Chairman, I don't know what that would cost. So what I've done is I've asked staff to budget a million dollars for next year, actually just to explore what we could, what level we could take our emergency response to in relation to the TV district, and come back with a number, but, but I believe that number's not gonna be a light number. The other thing that's important, I believe, is, and John probably won't touch on this today, is we've had to absorb about 1.5 million in deficits that we're not receiving in tax monies, in property tax. To be able to do that, Mojave County Finance and Administration has looked to stopping growing all of our contingencies. We're not growing our contingencies anymore. We've cut our contingencies down to the bare bones, to where Mojave County basically has, you know, our 12 to 13 million dollars in contingency, which just take, took a hit because of the tax cases, and we don't know how far that's gonna take us. We've got a minor contingency in our fleet, in our fleet replacement fund, and then we've got a contingency of about $3 million in this TV district. Now, granted, a lot of the, to be able to use a TV district, you know, there's some restrictions on what we can use district funds for, but let's say if our economy took a dive, or if we had another disaster, or if something went south on us, you know, what the board could consider is this TV district's contingency as a contingency that could be tapped for, for an emergency. And it may take an act of the legislature to be able to do that, but at least it's, it's there.
Okay, I'm kinda shocked that you, that we don't have something now, after all these years, that we don't have something in place, and why, this, this didn't become into the conversation when you had $6 million sitting in that fund, to use it for something like that instead of sweeping it for the jail debt? I, I'm just, I'm so shocked, I mean, you know, you talk about good years and bad years, this is all coming from people's pockets, and it's, there's certain statutes that you have to abide by for these, this TV district, we taxed too much for it, and now it sounds like, I mean, to anyone out there, it just sounds like a little slush fund, it sounds like.
And that's, you know, that's, I, I.
It's difficult for somebody.
Part of it's not, Mike getting into a political situation, answer, I think.
Thank you.
Because, and we have the sheriff here who took office 17 years ago, and he knows exactly what the emergency services department was like then, and it's dramatically improved since then, but it's the will of, of those in office to direct the building up of the emergency services, and I don't think the will has been there, because there was so much else that had to be done. I think we've come a tremendous way, Mr. Stewart has really directed us well, and what I asked Mr. Hendricks and staff to do was to put together something, because it is, this is gonna be a lot of money to put together, but the price you can't put on when you have an emergency to be able to notify the people, I've been back to, I don't know, Virginia DC, wherever I went for the, for more emergency management training, and the biggest thing was communications, and I think we have the personnel, the majority of it in line, we have to have food rations and those things set aside, but without communications and especially the public, we're gonna be lost, and I think this can handle it so that the, maybe can handle it, we'll, we'll see, so the general fund doesn't have to pull it out, and I think that would make it easier for people like yourself who might not have used the TV district, if you see that, well, I'm not watching Fox News, or whatever you would watch, but you are getting a service from the emergency part that if we ever needed.
I don't even know how I'd be able, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Basically, because the TV district serves more of my district than District Four, I can certainly understand your position and that of Supervisor Moss, and I will agree with you, next year I would certainly be willing to look at reducing those numbers down to operation plus contingency, but at this point in time, because we're looking at a threshold of investment to protect our constituency and against possible super disasters, is what I consider them to be, and they're, they're going to happen, it's just a matter of time, but I would, I would caution our board to reduce it a great deal this year. I think we need to really look into the expansion of the emergency services portion of this, and that's basically my statement, is to not reduce it this year, but I will certainly be one to walk hand-in-hand with you next year to reduce it if those are, are not valid concern.
And you're sure this is legal, to do this, to use that money for this? I mean, if, I just, I'm still having a hard time, if you don't have, if there's a catastrophic event and there's no power, I don't see how any of this is gonna matter.
And Madam, Madam Chairman, what stumbled, what made me stumble is when we started talking about the sweeps, you know, that's nothing that's under my control, and I think actually in looking at those sweeps in retrospect, you know, they were authorized by the state legislature, and they went to a very good cause, and they've put Mojave County on a much better financial footing than we would've been if we didn't. So there's arguments pro and con, but I can't, you know, what I have to do is advise the board on, on today, you know, and what's under my authority to advise you on. I told you that, right now, I don't have the answer to what our capabilities can become. I've said that I've directed development services and, and our emergency management to explore that, and whether that means putting generators at each one of our stations, or expanding our capabilities with the TV districts. I don't know what that cost is, and I don't even, I can't even paint you a picture of what that's gonna look like in the future, only that I believe that there's room for improvement. How would that work if we had generators to, to be able to control our own broadcasting? You know, you say, well, if we had the grid down, how would people get that information? And that's a good question, but I would assume that we would have residents out there that would have generation, generator capabilities, and capabilities to receive that signal, and maybe gather communities together to disseminate the information that we would broadcast. I don't know. But what I do hope is that I would be able to bring you a picture of capabilities, and ask the board to authorize us to fund that, to be able to improve our capabilities. I don't have those answers right now.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
If I may.
Go ahead.
This is, and I understand what's being said, and I think there's a lot of valid points on both sides of this equation, but to me, it's really boiling down to a more simple, a simpler, more basic analysis. No one's denying the value of the TV district, that's an improvement from last year where it was being considered cut. The issue is the revenues and the tax rate associated with that TV district. Right now, we're receiving, if I'm reading these numbers correctly, 1.5 million in revenue to fund a $400,000 to $500,000 TV district, and that's been the case for years. So the taxpayers for the TV, because we're, we're now talking as Mojave County Television District, has been paying three to four times the value of, on their tax rate as compared to what they're receiving on that. So that's, that's a more, and I think even though, and that, and, and going back, even though the surplus, because there's, that means by math, math, mathematically, every year there's a million dollar surplus if nothing changes, or more, it was put to good use. I think paying down the debt was a wonderful thing, and it's, as my grandfather once said, who was very successful in business, interest is for suckers, and by paying down debt, we avoided that interest and we benefited the taxpayer. But now, we have the issue of, okay, the debt, the surplus was taken and it was applied to a good point, what are we doing from this day forward? And I think our legislative responsibility is to make the revenues of the district more or less corresponding to the costs, the expense of running that district. Now, I take into consideration what Supervisor Watson has said, and by the way, it's, it has nothing to do with District One versus District Five, this is just a property tax rate issue. And I take into account, very much so, what County Administrator Hendricks and Supervisor Johnson have said about needing to have a cushion so we can, when we do put this pan in place, we can go forward for our emergency services that we can provide our residents. But right now, those are speculative future expenses, and I don't think a speculative future expense, because it could be $1, it could be a million dollars, we don't know, should stop us from doing our duty now, as I see it, which is to reduce that tax rate to get it to a point where, yes, we cover our expenses, so we provide this continued service, that, yes, we do get an extra revenue coming in, so we can pursue this expansion of emergency services, which I think are important, but we also should consider that we have room to reduce the rate and accomplish both those objectives.
Okay. Anyone else want to say anything?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
I just wanted to say that I would support a reduction in this.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that I would support a reduction in this, but I would also like to hear a report from our emergency management staff. I did have a tour of our storage area, so I'm well aware that we have a lot of emergency equipment that is there in the ready, a lot of things that have been donated by FEMA and the federal government. So I think we're well on our way to establishing a good emergency response team and inventory. So I would, I would really like to hear a report from Byron, Mr. Stewart.
He's not here.
Yeah. And Madam Chairman, I'd assume, if I was going to guess, Byron's out assessing our storm damage that we had. But that would be a guess.
Sure.
Madam Chairman, just point of order on that. These rates need to be approved today so that we can publish our tentative budget in accordance with statute. And so if we, if we need to, it would be great to have Byron here to give you that information, but he's not, and we still need to take care of this today.
Madam Chair?
I would point out as well, just for the benefit of the board, that each...
Quite well taken. So maybe we could reduce it minimal amount to where we could accomplish both things.
Correct. And maybe do this in stages as we see how it develops with the emergency development plan. I would point out that a minimal reduction to, from 8.67 cents to eight cents would, would save the taxpayers an additional $117,000 in addition to the $45,000 that they'll already be saving just by leaving the rate the same. So if we reduce to eight cents, the taxpayers in that instance would, would be saving $162,000 across the district from what they're paying in the current texture.
Okay. In having that information, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the television district tax rate at .07 per $100 of assessed value for the fiscal year 2015.
I'll second that. The chairman's...
No, no, I shouldn't. You go ahead.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Have a question.
Yes, discussion.
At .07, what revenues would that produce?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Watson, at seven cents, the district would raise 1.229 million. That would be a $293,000 reduction on top of the $45,000 that we're already reducing just by leaving the rate the same. So it'd be 340,000.
So we reduce our surplus from a million dollars roughly down to $700,000 roughly?
Yes.
Which means that we would have plenty of room for emergency expansion and all the rest, that kind of stuff. All right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Forty-three, discussion and possible action, approve the holiday lighting fiscal year 2015 budget and setting a district tax rate of .0179 per $100 of assessed value.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, just to point out, Holiday Lighting District is not a fund that we used to put up Christmas lights. This is the lighting district that was formed in Holiday Shores to provide streetlights. And this board is the board of that district, and therefore you need to set the rate. Staff calculates that rate based on what is required to pay their electric bill for the streetlights that are in force.
And if I could clarify, Madam Chair, this is actually my favorite board item from Mr. Tim Kopey, because it looks like the rate is going down.
Yes. Okay, do we have a motion?
It is.
I move that we approve item forty-three.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number forty-four, discussion and possible action, adoption of the 2014 to 15 tentative budget as presented and set the public hearing for adoption of the final budget on August 4, 2014.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, it's my pleasure again to present to you the staff recommendation for the 2014-2015 Mojave County budget as the tentative budget. This is a budget that's required by law to be adopted by the board to show the public their intention for the budget for the coming year so that it will be published in the newspaper on two occasions, and then at your August, first meeting in August, board meeting, the public then would have the opportunity to address the board from an informed standpoint based on what you're proposing to your budget. I would point out that the budget that is presented to you assumes that we will have a $447,000 reduction in primary property taxes owing to the reduction in property valuation. Also, secondary districts levy by remaining the same and making the change that you have just recently made will combine for another 495,000 plus to 293. So we're about a $780,000 reduction. And the secondary districts bring us to a total reduction with what you've already approved at about $1,236,000 from what we're collecting as a county this year. I would point out that all, all other revenue sources for the county that are involved in this budget, the two major increases are the state shared sales tax, which we can, based on the Department of Revenue estimates, increase 219,000 for next year, and we'll be generating additional fees in the, in the departments of approximately 486,000 from the activities that they charge fees for. We will have major increases in expenses in the general fund due to this being an election year. The election department and the voter registration department will cost us approximately 545,000 more than they did the current fiscal year, but that happens every other year. And also, the ability to pay off this building which occurred July 1. We now own the building we're sitting in. But that's going to shift some costs that had previously been paid through the quarter cent sales tax as part of our lease to general fund for things like operation maintenance and utilities, a total of 612,000. There are some new initiatives in capital included in the staff recommendation, which are in your book, that have been funded by the, by the proposal. And I would point out, as we discussed at our workshop, that the staff proposal that you have today includes a two cent change in the primary property tax rate. It will still generate that $1.2 million reduction in taxes collected in total in the county. But those were identified with specific items that we would not have included in our budget were it not for this change in the, in the tax rate. The tax rate we are proposing is 1.8396, and would, as I said before, that rate just on the primary tax will result in nearly 500,000 of tax reduction. When combined with the, when combined with the rates that are approved for the secondary districts, the total reduction will be $1,236,000 in taxes. Staff's proposing also to fund a $1.5 million transfer from the general fund to create a capital projects fund that is funded with general fund money to go along with the quarter cent sales tax to fund the needed capital improvements in the county. At your previous meeting on this topic, there was some question about the priorities of what would happen when, and that certainly is a board decision, not a financing decision. But I would tell you that if we begin this process now with this $1.5 million transfer and commit ourselves to doing that in the future, all projects on the list that you were presented can be accomplished in the timeframe of 2020 fiscal year. And in fact, in your, in your packets, there's a timetable that shows the receipts and the expenditures that we would presume. With many of those projects being interchangeable based on your prioritization, fortunately, several of them are in the same ballpark of cost, and so a $3 million project is, is a $3 million project, whether it's an animal shelter, or a warehouse, or a, as a sheriff's substation. So that, that process can begin with this budget as it's presented, that that transfer can occur. And as long as we stay committed to that, then in the future, we would not only have a source of funds through FY '20 to complete all the identified building projects, but would have from that point forward, a $1.5 million per year building maintenance source of funding that's critical to continue to maintain the buildings after we build them. The budget also includes, and you'll vote on this on item number forty-nine, but it also assumes approval of item forty-nine in funding. Item forty-nine is the, the one with the employee pay raises for those employees over step ten. That's accomplished in this budget and per your instructions in the, in the workshop. At this point, I'd be happy to take any questions or...
Madam Chairman, may I make one clarification? I, one of the things that John mentioned, the 1.5 million reoccurring for building, that's included in, in the budget without any proposed increase in, in the tax rate. There is a list of new initiatives that were recommended, and those new initiatives are being proposed to be funded with a two cent...
Tax rate change.
Tax rate change, two cent tax rate increase. So the 1.5 million is included in the budget. If you wanted to go forward with the new initiative, staff is recommending to be able to do so, which includes healthcare change costs and so forth and so on, that the board would increase their tax rate by two cents.
So a yes vote on forty-four would, would be a yes vote for the two cent sales, the two cent increase?
Madam Chairman, at this time, you can make a motion to adopt a staff recommendation, which would include that, or you can amend the staff recommendation in any way you wish.
Yes, Supervisor Watson.
Yeah. I, I believe if you were to pass the tentative budget, it would be the two cents. I don't think that this board has any desire to increase the taxes overall in consideration of what we've just done. So I'd like to move to adopt the proposed tentative budget with the following changes. That the primary property tax rate shall be 1.896, which is the current levy. Then the following new initiatives shall be conditionally approved with an effective date of January 1, 2015, if the general fund revenue exceeds the budget through the first five months of the fiscal year. And that would be the Sheriff's Dispatch Reclassification, 59,000. Public Defender, New Office Clerk and Attorney, 33,000. Legal Defender, New Secretary, 42,000. Probation Department, Lead PO Reclassification, 16,6. Procurement Department Reclassifications at 13,8. And Legal Reclassifications at 15,7. Now, these would only be done if, number two, the following new initiatives would be conditionally approved. That would have to be if the general fund revenue exceeds the budget through the first five months.
I have a question, Madam Chair, Supervisor Watson. Did you say is it 1.896, or are you going back to the 2014? 1.8196?
Yes, 1.8196.
And just for clarification, it's recommended by staff to go with 1.8396, right?
Correct.
80196.
Okay. I'll second Supervisor Watson's motion.
And I guess for clarification on this, I know the sheriff's up here, and I have some questions on that. We do have part of it, and it'll probably go to the sheriff. I know he wants to address some issues with, with funding in his department. But we also have, under our direct control, I see we're taking, making some, what are they, making department heads, or division heads, or whatever the new name is, but one of those positions for management services, which has been a great contributor to this board and to the county, it doesn't come with a pay raise. I think that should be addressed along with whatever Sheriff Sheehan has. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
If I could, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, maybe I was mistaken, but I believe that Supervisor Watson's motion included additional funding for the Sheriff's Dispatcher. Is that correct?
Yes. Dispatcher Reclassifications.
Good morning, Chairman Angus and Supervisors. What I bring to you is the matter of importance with the public safety dispatchers. I noticed that you had some real concerns about public safety throughout the county and emergency services. And the woman from Dolan Springs, again, had some concerns about public safety, and I appreciated her comments on the job that the sheriff's office is doing up in Dolan Springs. But I'd like to bring you this information to show you what a serious situation we have with our dispatchers. We employ 14 public safety 911 dispatchers in the Mojave County Sheriff's Office. We have since 2009 hired 38 people for those positions. Because of the low pay, because of we're so far behind, 30%, the three surrounding cities, we almost immediately lose them after they go through training. So we have only retained 10 out of the 38 people that we have hired and trained for this position. The public safety dispatcher, I certainly don't have to explain what they do. They are the lifeline of the communities of Mojave County, and the deputies and law enforcement officers, and sometimes the fire personnel on the street throughout the entire county. You know, the sheriff's office dispatches throughout the entire county, not in a very small jurisdiction, a few square miles. We have this 13,500 square miles to dispatch. And the dispatch center dispatches to our deputies throughout the entire county, in Arizona Strip, Wikiup, Mojave Valley, Lake Havasu, Fort Mojave, Meadview, Dolan, everywhere throughout the entire county. So it's very imperative that we have high-qualified dispatchers and people that are going to be sticking around for a while, not leaving because of the low pay. On the next slide, I show the dispatcher pay, us compared to the surrounding cities. And right now, as I stated, we're about 30% behind. And that's a lot of money when you're making 1386 per hour compared to 17, 18, $19 an hour sometimes. So it's a, it's a tremendous incentive for others to go somewhere else with public safety dispatching, especially when they're already trained. They can walk right in the door just about, hire on a city, and get about a $6,000, $8,000 instant pay raise. You can't blame them for do it. I wouldn't blame them, and I don't blame them for doing it. If you looked at the amount of calls for service on 911 comparing the sheriff's office to the surrounding cities, it's staggering. 43,000 compared to 26, 24, and 20. And that shows how much busier our public safety dispatchers are. And they have to have knowledge of the entire county, not just a small geographic area. So they have to have knowledge of all these various communities, and have to have a lot of training and a lot of experience in, in order to provide a public service and a life-saving service sometimes. And the last portion is a email that went out from the City of Kingman last week. We're at 1386 starting pay for our dispatchers, and this is 1699. That's a tremendous, tremendous amount of difference. And it makes it almost impossible to keep qualified people that will serve our community and provide the lifeline to the citizens that call on 911, and also the deputies that are relying upon them for backup calls and service in emergencies that they have so often. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Madam Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Would Supervisor Watson's motion, which I think allocated, and correct me if I'm wrong, Supervisor Watson, $59,000 towards your dispatchers?
59,862.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Watson. Would that solve the issue that you're bringing to us?
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Moss, that would, what this was, I originally put in a three-year plan for the county, because I know of the county's situation. That would give the dispatchers, I believe, about a 10% raise. This year, I plan to bring this up over a three-year period. But what the, since I have submitted that budget several months ago, we've had other people leave. And I believe that I, what I would like to do is today, change that to see if we can increase that, to bring it, do it over a two-year period, and not wait till January, because by January, again, we're going to lose some more personnel. I would like to get that done as soon as possible with the beginning of this budget year, if financially possible.
One of my problems is, I hear this from every department, how it's dire, and everyone's losing good people. And I know it's, it's a problem throughout the county. But if, if we do this, so explain to me, I'm a little slow, okay? So this is if, if we up it the two cents? Does this, we have to up it in order to get this done?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, based on Mr. Watson's motion, we could accomplish what, what the sheriff needed. We can in fact do that on July 1, and postpone each of these others slightly based on, based on income exceeding expectations. So it may be January, we may have to postpone to February on some of these others. But I agree with the sheriff, this is a life safety issue, and we should, we should fund this immediately at the full 59,862. I would point out, for Supervisor Moss, the amounts that Supervisor Watson mentioned were a full year cost. We would only be funding most of these for a half year if we start them in January. So those we could accomplish. So, those we could accomplish, again, assuming that our other revenues exceed what we're expecting. I will point out that the Department of Revenue's estimates for sales tax, for example, which is our second-largest source of revenue, is typically quite conservative, and we most generally beat it pretty well. And so, budgeting at the Department of Revenue's numbers allows us to stay conservative with our revenue estimates, but also, we have consistently beat those, which is why I think that if we wait until January, we could afford all these other initiatives, funding them only for the six months.
I think what Supervisor Angus was saying, Mr. Timko, is what Supervisor Watson's motion, which solves in large part, and maybe even more so based upon when you start these other initiatives, is still maintaining the current tax rate of 1.8196. It does not include the two-cent increase.
That is accurate.
Thank you.
I have a comment. I just wanted to state, as having personal knowledge of what it's like to be a dispatcher, they are the lifeline of the law enforcement. They're also the lifeline of the citizens calling in, and they've historically been underpaid, so I would be in support of this. If our budget can find a way to make this happen, I would be a yes vote.
If I could ask...
This time, I would have to change my motion, I believe, to make the Sheriff's Dispatch's reclassification an immediate change, and the others be... Contingent upon number two, the initiatives being conditionally approved with the effective date of January 1, if general fund revenue exceeds the budget through the first five months of the fiscal year.
I'll second that amendment. Okay. I also have another question. Actually, I have two, if I could. Does this budget going through, I think it does, but I want to clarify with Mr. Hendricks on the record, that the 2014-15 budget, tentative budget before us includes funding the Golden Shores Nutrition Center at prior year's levels. In other words, contemplated future changes have not been embodied within this budget.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, yes, what you asked is true. None of the senior programs have had any reduction as a result of a general fund transfer reduction. So, they'll be getting the same from the general fund in FY15 as they got in FY14.
And thank you. I have one more question, Madam Chairman, if I could. Have the other elected officials here, are they going to take the chance to come in and tell us whether they can work with this budget or not?
We already did.
I see. Well, I see Kip Anderson from the court. He's not elected, but he's the next best thing we have. I don't know if there's...
Didn't we already do that? I believe we already did that at our budget meetings.
They did, but this is what we're actually voting on, and there's been some changes, I believe, minor, minor and positive changes, I think, but I just want to make sure that they're...
Chairman Angus, I'll keep this short. We're supportive of what's been proposed, the probation positions. We would certainly, as you mentioned, Chairman, we feel there's a need there too, but there's, if we can hold off till January, so we're supportive of this, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question for Mr. Anderson. While he bravely got forward, we heard from CSA earlier about our PILT monies and how important it is to all the counties in the state, and it was very disappointing to me that nobody from the courts would support us while all other elected officials in the county supported us on asking our federal delegation to fund our PILT pay.
If I could say something before Mr. Anderson does, I think the courts are required to stay neutral in political decisions. I think that, I personally believe if it was up to them individually, they all would have signed off. Unfortunately, I think they need to keep their lips zipped when it comes to these sort of proposals.
I think, you know, the idea that they consider that political, this is the federal government paying us for us taking care of their lands. The courts can hide behind the fact that they think it's political, but you have no problem standing up here asking us for more money, but yet, when we try to get the money due to us, you're nowhere at the scene.
I don't think the courts are hiding. I think they're complying with what they see as their ethical obligations, and the Mojave County courts are widely admired within the state of Arizona because of their high level of ethics, intelligence, experience, and training.
Okay, let's get back to the budget, okay? Thank you very much. All right.
I have a question, Madam Chair, Mr. Timko. With this proposed tax rate, does that include the 1.5 million shift to capital improvements?
Madam Chairman, Mr. Johnson, yes, it does. Without raising the tax rate above the 1.8196, we will be able to accomplish that transfer.
I guess then I would bring forth, we cut the TV district, so why are we putting away this 1.5 million? If we could save that to the taxpayers, if we're truly concerned about cutting the burden on our taxpayers, I would look to cut that 1.5 million.
I could respond. My personal position on that issue is, I believe, you yourself, Supervisor Johnson, has brought forth building projects, this is Morgue. I believe the new courthouse has been on the agenda since 2000. It has been bumped for what I personally view as lesser priority projects. I believe we have insurance coverage issues at our current substations because we can't do certain things anymore because of the deteriorating condition and other issues. We have some critical capital improvement needs, and if we're going to meet those, we need to have money. The purpose of government is to provide services, and to provide services requires buildings in places like Mojave Valley and in Lake Havasu and Kingman. So, I think that's why we've come up with a plan which will meet those needs over the next five years.
Okay, anyone else want to say anything? Okay, what, do we have a motion? You have the motion from Supervisor Watson and a second. Seems like so long ago. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'll give you a copy.
Okay, you'll get a copy from Supervisor Watson. Okay, off to item 45, discussion of possible action. With a heavy heart, accept the resignation of Mojave County Sheriff Tom Sheehan, effective Friday, August 1, 2014.
I make a motion, we accept Sheriff Sheehan's resignation.
I second that, and I would also say that Sheriff Sheehan's been a wonderful sheriff.
Okay, anyone else? I mean, would this be the time for us to say all nice things about Sheriff Sheehan, or that's going to happen in the months ahead? Should we just go ahead? We're kind of running late, so. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Forty-six, discussion of possible action, appointing a person to the position of Mojave County Sheriff. Any motion for executive session?
I move that way adjourned to executive session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll just be a few minutes. We're just going to go over there in executive session to the lawyers, and we'll be right back.
Yes. This guy?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll address it.
I'm just standing, just to stand for just a minute.
I know, it's been a long meeting. The last, last time was a long meeting, too.
You're fine.
I know, mine's just a long, some of this stuff, I don't know why we can't go through the next one, to avoid, you know, some of this, but I guess with the budget, we have to.
That's the big one.
Yeah. Okay, Supervisor Johnson's back, and we're back from executive session. Which is item number forty-six, discussion of possible action, appointing a person to position the Mojave County Sheriff. Now, I did have somebody signed up to speak, but I'm gonna ask, after we do the motion, you'll understand that today would not be the day to be speaking. So I'm gonna just put this aside, and I'll entertain the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we advertise, the direct staff, to advertise the position to replace departing Sheriff Sheehan. That at the next board meeting, which is scheduled for July twenty-first, that we decide upon which applicants we intend to interview. And that we conduct that interview on July twenty-eighth at a special meeting, and that we vote on the preferred applicant also at that time.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item forty-seven, discussion of possible action, appoint District Four Supervisor Jean Bishop to fill the board and commission vacancies created by the passing of Supervisor Brotherton.
She'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Discussion possible action to select a Mojave County Board of Supervisors Vice Chairman. Supervisor Brotherton had been the vice chair, and so we need to fill that position.
I make a motion that we appoint Supervisor Steve Moss.
I'll second that.
I'll, I'll flirt it.
Well, you can just vote on it. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Just number forty-nine, discussion of possible action, authorize the approximately forty employees to receive the full benefit of the two-point-five percent increase approved by the Board of Supervisors during the FY fourteen budget, and if deemed necessarily, necessary, amend the administrative procedures to reflect this action.
Make a, make a motion for approval?
Okay, I, I would like to discuss this. Okay. If I remember correctly, last year when we gave the blanket pay raise, there was these forty employees who were at the top of their range. And, meaning that we couldn't give them the two-point-five because it would put them over and all that, in my estimation, nonsense that happens in government employee works, that we couldn't do that. So instead of doing that, we gave it to them as a one lump sum, and then we would have to go back this year and revisit it. And this is what this is, we're revisiting it. I wanna ask, if we approve this, what does that do for our budget? That we just?
It's in the budget.
It is in the budget? Okay, so, okay. And on another's angle, you know, a lot of happened at the state level about, I don't know, I'm surprised I just found out about this. But there was, the governor signed into law a bill, and they totally changed workforce merit rules, everything like that. And so, this, we're not gonna talk about it now, but I'm gonna say this year, we're gonna look into changes. The way that our worker, county workers are rewarded, the way they're paid. We have to, because we are, we are getting into that territory that the whole country seems to be in. So again, that's just, I'm putting out there, probably shouldn't have, but it seemed appropriate during this discussion, because this is gonna happen again next year, right? So now, we can't do it again, this has gotta be done as a bonus.
Madam Chairman, like what was previously discussed, this raise is in our budget, and it is included, and it would carry forward if we held the same budget next year. What I would recommend is, we shouldn't look at the policies and procedures, we should just treat these forty individuals separately and specially, so that we don't change our ranges or steps. And it will only impact these individuals.
Are they gonna get it as a bonus, or is it gonna be?
No, it'll be a reoccurring. You're voting to re, to instate this two-point-five percent increase that they received last year as a bonus, as, as included in their salary from now forward.
How come we couldn't do that the last year, then?
There were, one of the things that was being proposed last year was that we did a cost of living adjustment, which would have raised all the, all the steps within a range. I don't believe we had support from the board to be able to do that, so we had to fashion the motion around that and come up with some solutions accordingly. So it, it included just a lump sum increase for these people at the top of their range.
Okay.
If I can, I'm sorry, I'll defer to Supervisor Johnson.
I guess it's something we keep bringing up, and I don't understand why, it seems simple to me, and Administrator Hendricks touched on it. Every time we have an increase of two and a half, whatever it is, we raise the bottom on each step and the top on each step. Because every time our long-term employees, or not even long-term, people who are in the highest range, lose out on the pay increase. It doesn't seem right, it seems like that should be something that's just automatic. And I think the pay ranges should all be adjusted two and a half or three, whatever the percentage is each time, it seemed to be easier than coming back with a lump sum payment.
I think this year is, we're gonna have a lot of discussions about, now that this year, we're gonna be looking at the merit rules. So now would be the time to, you know, fix all of these issues. But anyway, back to this, so did we have, we had a motion?
We had a motion for discussion, I believe.
Oh, okay.
I have a question, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Watson. Earlier on the actual tentative budget, we had put on a condition that they were, that these expenditures would be contingent upon us being in a cash positive position, that's how I'll characterize it, for the first five months. Does this item forty-nine have that same condition?
No. Not under that condition, is my understanding.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, in essence, what we did was, we carried forward the budget, the, the salary budget for each department. So included in the salary budgets that were carried forward was this two-point-five percent increase for these forty employees. So there is not gonna be any reason to modify our budget as presented or approved by the board.
Does that answer your question?
It, it does, and I'll say that, my, my thinking was on this, because I do understand that there's some changes with the merit, merit rules, and that there's some new legislation that's out there that could impact employee-county relations. And we also seem to be moving into uncharted territory when it comes to budgetary issues, and that we're running a leaner, tighter ship. Which is why we had that condition, that, you know, we have to be in a cash positive position. Well, why don't we do a one-time bonus again on item forty-nine, and attach that same condition, that it has to be in a cash positive position, and we give it to them as a bonus on January first, if we are?
Aye.
Because that protects us, gives us some, some padding, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, if I may.
Sure.
If we were talking about the broader issue of all employees, I could understand that, but we're just talking about these forty employees. It's the forty people that are essentially penalized for being at the top of the range, they're our top producers and the people that have been here the longest. Does that?
It, it does. I was looking at from a purely financial planning standpoint, I was being Mr. Timko briefly. As opposed to right or wrong issue.
But this is how we, you know, we ended up here, again, right now, we'll do, we'll be in the same exact position next year, so might as well just take care of it.
But I will point out from last year, when I suggested that we give the employees their two-and-a-half percent as a bonus, and we didn't, and then we found out we were nine-hundred thousand dollars short this year, and I'm trying to avoid that recurrence, even though this is just a minor example.
Okay. Do we have a motion about the item?
I'll make a motion for authorization to the forty employees to receive the full benefit of the two-and-a-half percent increase, approved by the Board of Supervisors during the fourteen budget. If deemed necessary, amend the administrative procedures to reflect that action.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, number fifty, discussion of possible action, approve waiver of fees for nonprofit organizations that qualifying can document their nonprofit status. Discussion?
If I could, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
This, I believe, came up at the last meeting, or the meeting before that, actually, that we could always change the fee schedule that we had put in force for the Health Department. What it comes down to is that there are some areas in some counties, not Mojave County, that treats the fees charged to nonprofits differently than they do for a commercial business. Currently, the situation in Mojave County is that a food kitchen, and I'll give the example, the Mojave Valley Food Kitchen, is treated the exact same as if they're McDonald's, when it comes to the fees that are charged. And this is intended to address that issue. There's another issue that came up a few months ago, where the Bullhead Kiwanian Club wanted to do a one- or two-hour hot dog sale to support a Lowe's building project for, for Lowe's. Their target was to sell roughly a hundred hot dogs, and make a hundred bucks on it, and they got charged a forty-five dollar fee. So this issue, I'm bringing this issue because I think we need to deal with that kind of burden on organizations, which are providing what I consider a very cost-effective delivery of community services, and the county is hindering them in that respect. Yes, I know we do budget for the Health Department to be a neutral, budget neutral, and that's why we figure out how many vendors we have, and we divide that by a certain number, and that's what fees everyone charged. I really think that the Health Department, though, needs to readjust that equation, make it more of an algebraic equation, because I do not think either the Kiwanians on a one-time event, small event, or food kitchen should be treated as if they are a commercial food vendor like McDonald's, they shouldn't be treated like a for-profit entity.
I have deja vu, didn't we vote on this already? Didn't we deal, didn't we talk and vote on this?
We, I brought it up, and I was told to bring it back. And so I'm bringing it back. Once I had something, to bring it back, it is attached to item fifty, what I have. And by the way, the form that was provided, some nonprofits would get a hundred percent if they came in, and let's say it's the Kiwanians, and they're doing a two-hour hot dog sale in a Lowe's parking lot, they can get a hundred percent waiver. If it is a large organization that does many events, or has many services, and is bringing in lots of money, they can get a fifty percent waiver. That's why there's a distinguished meeting between what's going on, and what activity is being generated. I don't care, I put, I think, a fifty thousand dollar expense threshold in there, between whether you get a fifty percent or a hundred percent waiver, whether you're a large organization or a small organization. I don't particularly care about that number. I had to have something in the form, through that, there is a suggestion, we could make it one dollar, we could make it the fifty thousand dollars suggested, I prefer less, but that's the idea there. If smaller organizations would get a full waiver, larger organizations could get fifty percent waiver, as long as they're doing the exact same thing, they're a verifiable nonprofit who's generating funds to put back into the community.
I think, Madam Chair, if I may, obviously, I'm in opposition to this, I believe that everybody pays the same price, whether they all love us or all hate us, I don't care, as long as they're on the same team. I think that nonprofits, they go out and raise their funds, that's up to them to raise those funds from who they want to, they should not be raising them from the taxpayers of Mojave County and our Health Department, and I think this could affect, I think Supervisor Moss just has it for, maybe the Health Department right now, but it could get into planning and zoning issues as well, once people get their foot into the door. I, I think that it costs our Health Department, I don't know if they're here today, but it costs them the same amount of money to go and inspect a small operation as a big operation, so I would be in opposition to this. Thank you, Chairman, I guess, I guess my concern is, putting our, our staff in a situation of having to make decisions on a, on somewhat of a nefarious issue. I don't know that we can exactly define how each and every one would be, would be an exact decision as for the previous decision, I mean, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think, I think it could cause more problems than it would solve, and it makes, and it makes people make some arbitrary decisions that could be, I think it would, I think it would.
It would be detrimental to that employee, and I'd hate to see it, any of our employees be in that situation.
I think it's just one of those things that is, unfortunately, has to, everything has to be equal, because it is an equal amount of time that the staff is putting into these things.
I would actually say that it doesn't have to be equal, Madam Chair, and that many counties in, for example, Maricopa, Yabapai, Clark Counties, all do have a bifurcated system in place, and I think that's the way to go. Now, when you go, I don't want to, I try to take it to the close people here, but it is the trend nationwide, that you don't tell a food kitchen, pay us five-hundred and sixty dollars before you're allowed to open the door and sell a hot dog. That defeats the purpose, you're taking away five-hundred and some meals when you do that, at the cost that they're doing that. So we, do we as a society, do we want, do we as a government entity, the phrase that we use a lot in debates is, you know, we wanna be a helping hand, we don't wanna be a burden. Are we gonna help them achieve their goal, or are we gonna be an impediment to them achieving their goal? And I think treating nonprofits differently, as Maricopa County does, as Yabapai does, as Clark County does, is, that is the way Mojave County should be going, we should say as a matter of policy, it is our job to get you doing what you need to do to better the lives of our citizens and the community, because you do it a lot more cost-effectively than we as a government entity can do it.
Okay, so are you saying that you want the staff to come up with a?
I provided a form, I mean, the, the form is attached, and I'll go through it for those of you who don't have the benefit of it on, in reviewing it, is, you can, an entity can request a waiver of fifty or a hundred percent, doesn't mean they get the waiver, but they can request it, or of a specific dollar amount, if that's what they need. And that if they are a charitable nonprofit, and they can submit the government documentation proving that, or if they're a government entity, for example, a high schools booster club, that they can supply, come to us and say, we either want a full or partial waiver of your fee to do it. And then they fill out the form, they attach their documentation, it's not a judgment call from a staff perspective, it's, do you have more, here's your financial statement, or here's your, your form nine-ninety, nine-ninety EZ, or nine-ninety PF, look at the front, do you have that? If it's there, you qualify for one or the other. It doesn't, I don't wanna say a monkey can do it, because that's obviously untrue, but a minimally trained person could do it, they check the right box, and they say, give me the check.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jean.
Please.
I just wanted to say that I somewhat agree with Supervisor Moss, I think if it's a nonprofit, five oh one C three, they operate solely to provide relief for the poor, distressed or underprivileged, and, and they can demonstrate a financial hardship, possibly a budget less than ten thousand dollars a year. I, I think that would be a small number of organizations that would fit that, and we could probably find a way to, to help those minimal sorts of organizations.
How small amount is it? I mean, it seems to me that there's something going on in Mojave County all the time, nonprofits, events, so I don't think it's a small amount, I think it's, it's a lot of events.
Well, I think when you're looking at organizations, you're probably looking at less than fifty organizations which would fit this bill, compared to thousands of commercial businesses. When you look at activities, yeah, most of those, some of those organizations would be a one-time thing, for example, a food kitchen gets one, one permit, one fee, they're done for the year. So a big chunk of that, the booster club would probably be the same way. When it comes to Rotarys and Kiwanians, for example, they would be more frequent, but even then, a Rotary Club does two or three events a year, Kiwanians do two or three events a year, you're not talking about a whole lot, either of gross number of groups that would qualify, or as a gross number of activities that would be, have to be monitored, either at no or a reduced fee. And I would say that to Supervisor Bishop, when I put in here cutoffs, for example, those are purely arbitrary. I have a fifty thousand dollar expense or less as being one of the criterias, that, that could go down to ten thousand or five thousand, and I wouldn't lose a blink, in fact, I think it'd be a positive, I was trying to assuage some of the concerns that some of the other supervisors may have had. I think it'd be a very good idea to lower that number, if I'm interpreting your comments correctly.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, you know, when this issue was agendized, I really didn't know whether it specifically dealt with just food, food issues, or environmental health, or if it was across the board. And one of the things that did become evident is, is BG and M, or, or OMB put together a list of all nonprofits in Mojave County, and there's like over five-hundred and fifty nonprofits. So there's, there's a considerable amount, and that doesn't mean that every nonprofit does business with Mojave County, because not every citizen does business with Mojave County, except for paying taxes. every citizen does business with Mojave County except for paying taxes. But if we looked at environmental health and what nonprofits spend with them, it's considerable, it's, it's about, you know, at least $50,000 a year. One of the things that I would like to point out, you know, our, our departments, one of the reasons that we can and, and are able to balance our budget and not increase taxes is because we do a lot of fee-for-service. So, you know, you pay, you play. You play, you pay. We do that in, in development services, we do that in the parks, we do that in a lot of different areas to where you charge a fee, and that's what we operate on. On our environmental health and the other nonprofits, generally, there's a statute that allows us to charge the money. One of the things that that statute does set forth with environmental health in our inspections is that we can only charge a customer what it costs to do that inspection. We can't charge more. And so if we're grossly overcharging a nonprofit for a minimal amount of usage, then we should take a look at our fees and reduce the fees accordingly, if we wanted to charge nonprofits any fees. But with that said, if we're going to eliminate the fees or reduce the fees on a nonprofit, we can't augment those by charging other people more. So the board would have to designate, and this is my point, the board would have to designate general fund monies or other fund monies to augment what the departments would lose by not charging those fees.
If I could respond, Supervisor Chairman, the issue is, there may be 500 nonprofits in Mojave County. The vast majority of them aren't doing things that this would apply to. For example, I just formed a nonprofit corporation for the Friends of the Bill Williams River, which takes kids on outdoors excursions and teaches them about bow hunting. They don't do this. The vast majority, the one, the nonprofits that would fall into this category are probably, in my opinion, less than 50, or around 50. Now, there may be repeat events that they do, but there's not that many organizations. Secondly, I attached to the backup items, Yavapai County's Community Health Services Fee for Schedule. And they do distinguish between a nonprofit performing a function and a commercial entity performing a function. Because I do think, when you look at what we're doing as a board, at what we're doing as a county administration, we're attempting to improve the community. That should be our ideal. How do we make Mojave County a better place? How do we protect the health, safety, and security of our residents and give them those amenities in life which makes us a place that people want to do business and live and grow old in? And I think Yavapai County, on this particular issue, has hit the nail on the head, and we're still in the dark ages. And we need to get these people who are trying, who are sweating, who are working, who are trying to improve our Mojave County community, no profit to themselves, they're just trying to put those dollars into the streets, and as Supervisor said, Bishop said, helping those who can't necessarily help themselves. We can do that and keep the government out of that. What this proposes to do is get out of their way, not handicap them, not saying before you open your doors, we're going to treat you exactly like we treat McDonald's. We shouldn't be doing that.
But we still have to show up and do the inspections and stuff, so we're not getting out of the way. We're still, we're still doing it.
We are, we are doing what the Health Department thinks it must be done for these inspections, but we're doing so at a reduced rate. That is correct, because we're not burdening them more than we would, to the extent that we would a for-profit corporation.
I guess, Madam Chair, we can only charge what the cost is, so say it's $500, this is a figure, if we're giving nonprofits $250, that means the board is eating $250, so I myself, who is not giving to a nonprofit, now you have to take my taxes to make up that $250. I think that's where the problem comes from. We're taking from other people to support nonprofits.
Or I think we need to look closer at our fee schedules, because you can't tell me it costs $45 to show up in a Lowe's parking lot, stick a thermometer into a hot dog, check that it meets the 160-some degree temperature requirement, and leave.
Well, I, I think it comes into the, you know, you've got to pay for whoever it is we send out there, their travel time and everything else, it's, it's all of that, I think.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure the travel time and all that is in there, but if you go from the Mojave, or the Bullhead City Health Department location to Lowe's, it's about five minutes of travel time there and back.
Okay.
I, I think with the, I mean, if we're going to forgive fees, then we should just forgive all the fees and let all the guys who are nonprofit, or profits that are bringing us money, we shouldn't charge them.
Supervisor Johnson, that's an entirely different kettle of fish.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Let's have, let's a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm going to put on my Kiwanis hat, I'm the treasurer of the powerhouse Kiwanis, and I just wanted to make the comment, because it hasn't been made, that the Mojave County, when they're holding their food handlers class, very graciously invites all nonprofits to come, and we don't pay a fee for that. So I think that that is extremely beneficial to all the nonprofits in the area. And in the case of Lowe's, can you imagine the amount of customers came to Lowe's that day? And I think that perhaps Lowe's should have paid the $45 fee for that group. Just saying.
When it comes to what Lowe's should or should not have paid, I'll leave that up to Lowe's, but I will echo and agree with you that the Mojave County Health Department has been extremely generous and gracious when it comes to enabling the Kiwanians, the Rotarys, and all the rest of that to get their food handling cards. That is absolutely true, and they should be applauded for that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Okay, let's vote. Did, do we have a motion?
No.
Okay, who's going to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve item 50 of the agenda, with the only exception that we reduce the expense requirement from 50,000 to 10,000 on the approved form.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye. So I believe that's failed. Okay, 51. Sitting as the Board Directors of the Mojave County Library District, discussion of possible action, accept and approve the expenditure of $100 monetary donation to be used for the grand opening of the newly relocated South Mojave Valley Library location, and accept several non-monetary donations in the amount of $700, $711 for the library's summer reading programs.
Shall I move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
52. Discussion of possible action, approve Mojave County Parks issuing up to 10 $100 gift certificates per month for up to six consecutive months to Cameron Broadcasting of Bullhead City, Arizona, in exchange for airing Mojave County Parks' radio advertisements on local Cameron radio stations, equalling the value of gift certificates issued, and authorize the procurement director to sign any necessary documents.
Shall I move?
Okay, I have a question. All right. So we're talking about 10 $100 for up $6,000, so is this something that we do, we, we, because we're basically paying for advertising? And is this money, is this like giveaways that they're giving on the radio, or is it they're going to be giving to their, you know, pals?
Madam Chair, members of the board, with regard to the advertising, Cameron Broadcasting has approached us and has proposed an in-kind transfer in the amount of the certificate values that you have cited, $1,000 per month for six consecutive months, in exchange for $6,000 worth of advertising credit on the Cameron Broadcasting networks. And they're, of course, the, the leading broadcaster for country, classic rock, and Top 40. So what we envision Cameron will do with these certificates is use them at some of their live broadcasts, remote broadcasts, as giveaways and prizes. But we will be allotted Mojave County Parks' actual advertising slots. And what this does, of course, as you all know, is with the Parks having a market share encompassing the entire tri-state area, this folds in very nicely with the Cameron Broadcasting being, covering the whole tri-state area. We'll be able to reach out to new visitors of the area, new residents, as well as just reinforce Mojave County Parks' brand. And the important thing to know with these gift certificates are, we are going to establish blackout dates, we're not going to allow them to be redeemed during holidays, so we see this as excess inventory, kind of like an airplane that has empty seats during the midweek. We're going to allow this excess inventory to be used in trade instead of using cash for advertising.
Now, is this something, though, that, I mean, there are other, there are other stations. I mean, is this, does this go against anything procurement? I mean, I've already been approached by another radio station saying, we didn't know anything about this.
I believe I'll turn it over to Annie for the procurement.
Chair and members of the board, I spoke with Mr. Blackburn from the Parks, and he did state that if there were other radio stations that were to do the same or comparable offer, that he would also entertain doing that with them as well. So it would be, it'd be kind of like, it's under the simplified procurement, where if you have something for less than, say, 50,000, you could get three quotes. Since they came to him, we talked about it, and we decided that if there were two other broadcast stations or more, he would, he would accept an offer similar to this. So if you have somebody else, if you want to give that information to us, we will contact them and work something out with them as well.
We have it in writing how many ads we're going to get for this.
There will be a formal proposal.
Is it?
There is going to be a formal proposal that will be written up.
And is there any way of tracking to see if this works? And if it, if we're getting people, or if they're, I mean, honestly, I, I know radio. I mean, they give it as perks, they give it, so I, I want to make sure that if we're putting out money, that it's just not ending up in someone's, you know, pocket as a, as a perk from the radio station.
I believe that there is like a report that we could get from them, and we could make that part of the agreement, that we would be able to see when they advertise it and for the length of time.
I, I would, if you're going to, if you still have that open to do, I would get something in the contract that says a certain amount of them have to be given as giveaways on radio promotions.
Okay.
Just make sure that, that you got that all tied in, and then I'd be okay with it.
We'll work with them on the agreement, so that that is included.
Madam Chairman, one of the things that Parks is charged with is trying to find up new innovative ways to fill our parks, and with these blackout days, I'm sure that they're not going to be, they're going to be vacancies, and, and so we're not making money on these areas anyway during these blackout times. So actually, it's a no monies, no cost to the county to give away these spaces that aren't being occupied at the time. So I believe that was the intent. It's really not costing Mojave County any out-of-pocket expenses in hopes that we generate sufficient advertising to bring us more customers.
Yes, Madam Chair, I think, obviously, I think this should be a public service announcement, where they should be doing it for free for us, but with the system they have set up, I think we get it twice, once when we do the advertising, once when I'm sure they'll be giving them away, as giveaways where they say, call in at 5 o'clock for Mojave County deal, so.
Yeah, I asked about the public service, and because it's a profit, they're not going to do it.
We're, we're government, we're a nonprofit business. Seems like everybody else comes to us for giveaways, but when it comes to Mojave County, we get screwed.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve item 52 of the agenda with the add-on, that other radio stations similarly situated would be similarly treated.
Okay. A second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Number 53. Discussion of possible action, accept the identified millings from ADOT and the donations of labor and equipment by Lewis Construction of Kingman, Arizona, for purpose of placing asphalt millings and related surface treatments on various Mojave County fairground areas reserved for vehicle circulation and parking, and on property owned by Mojave County, all of which is at no cost to the county.
Shall I move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 54. Discussion of possible action, ratified Board Supervisor's Resolution Number 2014-102, opposing the new rules and policy by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's National Marine Fisheries Service related to the process of designating areas of critical habitat under the Endangered Species Act.
Shall I move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 55. Discussion of possible action, approve Board Supervisor's Resolution Number 2014-106, supporting federal legislation amendments to the Bipartisan Sportsmen's Act of 2014 to protect and enhance opportunities for recreational hunting, fishing, and shooting in Arizona and across the nation.
Shall I move?
Second.
Can I say something?
Certainly.
Before we, this, this is a bill, John McCain added something to this Bipartisan Sportsmen's Act that specifically addresses the Willow Beach Hatchery, and I want to thank him publicly for that. I believe this is, should be dropping, and I think it's got a lot of support this year because it's an election year, but it does address a lot of the concerns people have about the federal government's intrusion into the, the hunting and fishing and all our recreational uses. So I applaud Senator McCain for that. And with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number 56. Discussion of possible action, approve the payment of the finalized total settlement, including accrued interest from county general funds as soon as the totals are made available. At a later date, the treasurer will further recommend board, I think I missed something here. One second, excuse me. Okay, it doesn't say what it's for, but at a later date, the treasurer will further recommend board approval regarding the investment in debt instruments with the various districts repaying the Transwestern Pipeline Settlement. Do you want to explain this real quickly, Treasurer? Or anyone who just want to?
Yeah. Is there someone else here? You approved last month the- Right. -Transwestern Pipeline Settlement, and we have a lot to work out in terms of the districts and how much they owe, each one of them owe, but we are paying 4.25% interest every day on that money. And at $1.8 million, we just found out, I just found out at the beginning of this week, that we are paying it as of the date the payment was made. So that goes back to 2010 for the first payment, and we continue to accrue interest every day. So until we can quantify that with the assessor being able to give us every single parcel that's involved, and the new valuation, so we can go back into our system and we can adjust it under a correction, we don't know the exact dollar amounts.
So we've been paying 4.5 every day since 2010?
4.25%.
4.25 every day since 2010?
Well, we haven't paid anything yet.
I know, but I mean that it's been accrued.
But yes, it's been accruing.
Did we know that?
No, we didn't know that until the settlement was signed.
I think it's 4.25% per annum.
Right.
Of course, it's advertised over the course of each day.
Right.
And, and all the counties, there were seven counties that signed on to this, and everyone, everyone's got to do the same thing.
Right.
I, I really don't think that we knew that, that that was all going to go back, but...
Well, we did a rough chicken scratch of what it would be, and it's about $180,000 right now.
Wow.
And we just don't want it to get bigger.
Yeah, we don't. Okay, so...
I guess I have a question, Madam Chair. When will you have a, what will be the date when you will let us know exactly what every district owns?
I have a, an idea of how much they owe, and I don't want to put that out until I know the exact number. I talked to the assessor's office this morning and asked them for a definitive date on when I would get the valuations for each one of those years, and I haven't heard back yet.
I guess, though, what are we looking at in our next board meeting? I mean, because this money is here, and it'll be up to the board, and I'm sure there'll be a, a difference of opinion. My opinion is, we take it from them or their line of credit. Mojave County is not in a position to be loaning people other districts money. So they have to be made aware that as of next board meeting, we could be taking X amount of dollars from them. So can you tell us, will it be 30 days or 10 days? How long do we know till?
As soon as I get that phone call. I have no idea. Ken Fielder was wonderful and answered my phone call, but he did not give me an answer.
So you're waiting on the assessor's office?
I'm waiting for the assessor's office to tell me when they'll be able to get me those valuations.
But once he gets you those, it's...
A matter of plugging in into a spreadsheet I already have.
Okay.
And I have estimates, but like I said, I didn't want to give you estimates until I knew what the real numbers were.
We'll try to get it very quickly.
Very quickly.
Hopefully this week.
My plan is to bring it back to the board by the next session that you have.
Right.
Right, and then just, the, the total amount owed as of today is how much?
Well, the settlement was 1.8...
Right, but with interest, we've been doing it since 10.
Right, we believe it's another $180,000.
That's all the interest has been for those five years or four years? So it's almost $2 million, and out of that, what, $400,000, $300,000 is Mojave County's?
Right.
So people ought to be aware out there that there's over $1 million owed by other districts, not us.
Have we sent out a notice to these other districts telling them that?